Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, October 19th, 2015 work session of the Falls Church City Council. Delighted to have our friends from the CACT with us this evening and to have a very nice presentation, I'm sure, by NVTC coming up here shortly about the Route 7 corridor study. So, thank you all. Before we get started, why don't we just do a round reintroductions? Maybe we all don't know each other as far as CACT and council and the like. So, Paul?
Sure. I'm Paul Baldino, Chairman of the Citizens Advice Committee on Transportation. I'm Jeff Sykes, Transportation Planner for Department of Development Services.
Great.
I'm Kelly Coynor. Sorry, we're recording.
There you go.
Thank you. I'm Kelly Coynor. I'm the Executive Director of the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission.
Great.
Kansas City City Council.
Hi, Dave Tarter, City Council.
Nader Brut, City Council.
Hi, I'm Mary Beth Connolly, also on City Council.
Karen Oliver, City Council.
Thank you all again for coming out this evening. It's a very important topic, I think, for everyone in the city, given that Route 7 runs right down the middle of our jurisdictions. So, Mr. Shields, do you have some, any opening remarks you'd like to make before we get into the presentation?
Just very briefly, we're very glad to have NVTC come and join us tonight for this update on the Route 7 corridor study. Just by way of background for the City Council, this corridor study really began with a grant that was earmarked by Congressman Moran to the City of Falls Church. And we've worked with NVTC, or at the behest of the City of Falls Church, and we worked with NVTC to be the administrator and leader of this study of Route 7. And we're looking for a study that will help Route 7 move as many people to their destinations through this corridor as possible, and looking at all modes in order to accomplish that goal. And Jeffrey Sykes has been our staff point person recently with this effort. And so, I think we'll, Jeffrey, unless there's anything you would like to say, or Paul, we could turn it directly over to Ms. Coynor and hear the presentation from NVTC.
I'm glad to do that. I'm going to ask Mike Floyd from Parkers Brinkenhall. I've asked Dan Goldfarb to actually make the presentation. We are very excited about this project. This is the second phase of it. As you know, we completed the first phase and took a couple of things off the table, and now we're focused on a set of technical studies that we're going to be sharing with the public in the coming weeks that focus on the ridership and the costs of the different modes that remain on the table, namely, light rail, bus rapid transit, and enhanced bus service. And these will really form the foundation for a proposed recommendation that we will be coming back to you again with, as well as the public in the spring. Dan Goldfarb has recently joined the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission and is the project manager for the Route 7 project. He has a great deal of expertise on a number of the studies that have been done with respect to transit in this area over the last decade and a half.
Good evening. Thanks for having us here. I'm Dan Goldfarb and Mike Flood will be during the presentation. I'll do the first half. Mike is leading the consultant team, and he's from Parker Brinkenhall, PB. So, I just want to kind of start with where we are in the project and just give you an idea of, you know, update you on where we are. And as Kelly mentioned, we finished Phase 1, and now we're in Phase 2. So, we're looking at two detailed modes and some different alignments, and we're going to walk through that with you tonight, show you the results of our travel demand forecast and the cost estimates for each alignment and mode. I just want to, as we go through this, that in November, we'll be going into our public meetings, and we have three public meetings, and then we'll come out of that, and we'll have another set of public meetings in the spring to talk about which is the preferred alignment and preferred mode. But just as a reminder, that the public meeting for, we have three through the corridor, and November 10th is our meeting in the City of Falls Church at Mary Ellen Henderson. So, we hope to see the citizens from Falls Church out there, and any help we can get from the commission or the citizens group here in getting citizens out would be greatly appreciated. So, we look forward to that meeting. This will kind of be a preview of the kind of stuff that we're going to talk about at the meeting. So, I'll just start. So, as we look at the corridor, we want to try and like, so what's the purpose here? Why are we looking at high-quality transit within the corridor, not only for today but in the long term? And we have a corridor that's a lot of growth. We have a population growth of 34% in the corridor, with Tysons almost tripling within the population there. And then when we look at the job size of it, we can see that, again, we almost match that in growth, where we have 36% growth in the corridor. So, to give you an idea, we'll have about 730,000 jobs in the corridor by the year 2040, and we'll have about 750,000 people living in the corridor. So, you start to have a balance of jobs and population in the corridor. Okay, so, we talk about the corridor, and we know like, at the end of the corridor is Tysons, which is really a driver for Northern Virginia, and of course, is going to impact transportation in the corridor. But we kind of put this slide together to give you a feel of what Tysons would look like in the year 2040. Just to give you an idea, Tysons will have almost 160,000 jobs, which would be equal to, if you wanted to kind of get a vision, what that would look like. That's about looking at the CBD of Seattle today, so downtown Seattle. That's kind of what you have at one end of this corridor. So, the point of having high-quality transit in the corridor is that we want to connect people with economic opportunities and businesses. We want to increase the transportation choices in the corridor. We want to improve the quality of service in the corridor. And that means we want to increase frequency in the corridor. We want to increase the speed in the corridor for transit. Most importantly, reliability. We're looking at increasing the reliability, improving the reliability in the corridor. So, when we looked at this, we're kind of, we've carried four different kind of mode-based alternatives into our analysis. And the first really is if, what's typically called a no-build. What that means is if we don't do anything, you know, we want to compare to, how do our alternatives do if we don't do anything? Then the next one is a transportation system management. If we put in no capital, no intense capital improvements, and we just enhance bus service, what kind of ridership can we get? And then we want to look at, what if we, out of Phase 1, we came up with, what if we're looking at an LRT, a light rail, or BRT, Bus Rapid Transit? Now, these two modes have things in common, and the things that are most important and common is that we're talking about a high-quality transit service. So, we have high-quality stations with things like real-time information at the station. You would pay for your fare at the station, so you would have quick onboarding and alighting. The other thing is we have limited station stops. So, that's really what improves your travel time, is limited, is station stops. So, they're spaced farther apart. But then, so that's the common things for the mode, right? But the things that are different are how they operate. One operates on rail, and one doesn't operate on rail. The one that operates on rail, light rail, requires some kind of power source external to the vehicle, where BRT, the power source is within the vehicle. And then there's the difference in capacity. A light rail vehicle has about 200 persons per vehicle, and BRT has 120 persons per vehicle. So, that plays a, that plays a decision-making factor into, you're looking at the demand in which vehicle can serve the demand. So, now, I'm going to have Mike come up, and he's going to talk to you about the results of the travel demand and the cost.
Thank you, Dan. Good evening, everybody. I want to let you know that I am very happy to be here in Falls Church today. I visit Falls Church on a regular basis because my doctor is not far behind us over here, and now that I'm over 50, that's not that much fun anymore. So, I will say that I'm very much looking forward to this, a dialogue that doesn't include my health. So, anyway, what Dan was talking about is that we've spent some time over the last few months doing some technical analysis to take a look at the various alternatives, and we're working through that now. We have a meeting tomorrow with the technical representatives from the various jurisdictions, and we're going to be going through in much more detail a lot of the results that we've summarized here for you today, but we wanted to summarize a few of those things to give you a feel for what we're finding in the corridor itself. So, in terms of travel time projections, as Dan was pointing out, we're trying to create as much as we can exclusive guideway or benefits to the transit way, and with that comes travel time improvements. And what this is, this is a travel time summary from two points along the corridor, basically picking two points along the corridor, and how fast that would be able, you'd be able to get there in the no-build, which is basically the fully congested condition, the TSM, which are modest improvements, and then, as Dan said, with light rail and BRT, and the dedicated guideway, obviously you're able to get there much quicker. This is, we brought, this is an interesting summary graphic. This basically represents a summary of those trips that start and end within the corridor that's been defined by the light rail, I mean, by the light rail and BRT study, which basically connects Tyson's Corner and the City of Alexandria. And what this shows is that for those trips that start and end within the corridor, you know, typically what you're used to seeing is that they're all work trips. What you can see is actually, for the ones within the corridor, it's actually a majority of other trip types, those trips taking you to shopping or to church or the hospital, basically the non-commute modes you'll find mostly in the corridor for those trips staying within the corridor. So, this is interesting from the perspective of travel, but it's also important in terms when you start thinking about high-capacity transit, because a lot of the federal funding programs require a period of service throughout the day, not just the peak period. So, you really want to show some travel benefits outside of the peak periods. So, that's an important, important measure of corridor viability. So, with, with travel speeds improvement like this, that obviously doesn't come for free. Anytime you are retrofitting an existing corridor, it comes with a cost. And we haven't done any engineering on this project, so we basically worked up capital cost estimates for the area based on other systems across the country. And you can see that light rail with its required electric, you know, you have to build an entire electric system to support a light rail with the track with the more expensive vehicles. It turns out to be somewhat more expensive or quite a bit more expensive than BRT itself. And then the operating costs associated with the two systems also is noticeably different. So, things to consider as we take a look at, at the assessment of the corridors themselves. So, as Dan pointed out, we have a number of alternatives, and they're going to be assessed and compared one against the other. And then that information is going to be presented to you in the spring. To show you a little bit about what those would look like, this is a comparison of the LRT between Tyson's and the Mark Center, and the BRT and the Tyson's and the Mark Center. And you can kind of see the travel time savings, the new daily transit trips, and then the cost and the operating costs for each of those modes. So, summary information like this will be presented in the spring, and we're going to be coming back to you for input on the selected alternative. So, in terms of the alignments, we kind of started with what the thing's all about. This information presents a little bit more detail about the alignments that are being considered for the connecting Tyson's and the City of Alexandria. And the best way to think about the alternatives that are being tested are they're either mode or alternative alignments, and there's a combination of those. So, in terms of the alignment, we're, the Spring Hill Station in Tyson's has been identified as the endpoint on this end. And then we have the alternative, which travels down Route 7 and either connects to the King Street Station or travels down Route 7 and then connects along the existing West End Transit Way, which is a transit alignment in the City of Alexandria, either to the Van Dorn Metro or to the Mark Center, which is the Department of Defense Center here in the City of Alexandria. And then the other alignment, which is probably the most interesting thing for this group, is whether the alignment would travel down Route 7 or turn to make the connection at East Falls Church Metro Station. So, that's the alignment alternatives that are currently being considered and analyzed. In terms of the lane configurations, we just took, as we said, we didn't do any engineering, but we had to make some assumptions for the forecasting, so we, and we worked with each of the, as we said, we have jurisdictional representatives that we've worked with on all of this. And for this, we've identified that there are sections of the roadway that could handle potentially a dedicated guideway, where you, you know, build a lane for the, for the rapid transit vehicle in the sections of Fairfax County. There's a couple of sections, like this connection down to the King Street Metro. City of Alexandria has indicated to us that that can only be mixed traffic, only a mixed traffic operation. There's no other acceptable method in that, kind of that historic section as you go down the hill. And then there's other, other areas that are identified for this, what's called a bat lane, and that doesn't come with a Batmobile or a Batman or a Batgirl, Batwoman, I guess, unfortunately, depending on your preference. But what that does, means is that basically the right, the right lane of the alignment is taken for transit, and then those vehicles, those private vehicles that are accessing the businesses along the corridor, basically right-turning vehicles that are, they're getting into that thing. Anybody that's been down to Ocean City, you know, they kind of have that lane that runs along the curb. It's the same basic idea. So, it gives the benefits to the transit vehicle, but also allows for the turning movement traffic. So, given your right-of-way constraints in the City of Falls Church, that was an option that was recommended that we could be, that we could test for our, for our purposes. So, that was assumed here. So, with that, that kind of just brings us to the end of our summary information for your, for this meeting, and we're going to open it up for questions and answers for Dan or I or anyone else in the meeting. Thank you. Want me to turn the light on?
Thank you very much for the very informative presentation. Why don't we start with our guest from CACT? Paul, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes. Could you just talk us through the alignment in Falls Church, naming the streets?
I can try. You guys are going to know it better than I am, right?
I think I do.
Route 7 to 29, right? Up to the East Falls Church Metro, and then turn on to?
Roosevelt.
Roosevelt?
That's right.
Yep. Make access down to, there's some question, I guess, in the Seven Corners area. I guess the Seven Corners Master Plan has a new roadway alignment or new bridge alignment that has been identified as a potential alignment for there, but for our purposes, we went ahead and took it into the Route 7 alignment.
So, the, the map up here shows a connection between where the elbow is. Thank you.
Up here, yeah.
Yeah. So, would the one and only alignment be down Roosevelt and then back on 29, which does its Washington Street?
That's the one that's being tested for this purposes. So, I'll answer you, so, yes, that's what's being tested for this purposes. It's not, it's not the final line. Basically, one of the things to think about, our study is to look at, what we say, the viability of this, of the corridor. Is it viable in terms of, is there enough demand to warrant investment? Is it viable, could it be built? Or is it viable in, are you guys interested enough and invested enough to carry forward into the years of, that it takes to make one of these things a reality? So, that's kind of what this study's all about. I will tell you that we didn't do design, but we did have our rail designer take a, kind of, take a look at the corridor, and he identified two locations where he felt that aerial structures may be necessary for a light rail vehicle to get, to get the access through and access into the East Falls Church Metro from 29 because of the, was identified as potentially one of those, as well as this, this connection out here. So, it did drive the price up of the light rail alignment in order to be able to accommodate that movement. The other thing that was identified was that a light rail vehicle traveling, you know, it has a minimum turning radius that's not go up and take, make a right turn. So, there are some turns in there that would have to be accommodated with, with creative design or, or some right-of-way requirements in those areas as well.
And based on what you've seen around the country, light rail in a mixed-traffic situation, are there?
Very unusual.
Right. Okay. And there, are there hazard situations around rain and snow conditions?
There's, is there hazards with that? There's, I don't know if that would terminate hazards. There's definitely maintenance requirements for cleaning the, you know, cleaning up, yeah.
I grew up around trolley lines. And they got very slippery in the rain.
Yeah, they can. They can get very slippery in the rain. And, but you know, that's, that's really a maintenance question. But, you know, the, there's been a lot of dialogue on mixed-traffic operation, and as I said, it's not identified very often. There is one short, short section of the Purple Line in Maryland where they've identified on Wayne Avenue that it would be a mixed-traffic operation. So, there is a, there is a kind of a precedent in the region for making that happen, but you wouldn't do it for very long. And one of the, one of the, one of the things really, if you really want transit to be viable, you want it to move at a speed that makes it comparable with driving your car. So, if you, if you're making an investment in transit, you want to, as much as you can, create a dedicated lane so that gets that travel speed benefit, so you wouldn't spend $900 million to have it sit in traffic with everybody else, because you're not going to get that same level of travel there. So, there is this, there is this trade-off that has to be discussed if this advances beyond this phase of how this thing gets accommodated, but it gets accommodated in a way that is acceptable to the city, or acceptable to the county, or acceptable to the City of Alexandria, to make sure that it's as viable as it can be. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. Does, does everyone have a question? If so, we can go around the table. If not, we can just pick whoever might have a comment. Nothing from you, Dan. How about you, Phil? Dan? Okay. Mr. Brut, Nader?
Just a quick question regarding how the scope of this particular project is being done right now. Is either the commission or any other bodies looking at sort of the economic spinoff benefits to either of the options?
We are, it's working, yeah. So, we're not looking at the, we're not doing an economic study, an economic benefit study for the project. We are doing an assessment of how to fund it, which looks at development opportunities. And I was, we was talking to somebody today. We could put together like a white paper that says, these are the type of economic developments that you could accrue through an investment in a study like this, but those studies of economic benefits for the corridor can range from somewhat expensive to a couple times the amount of our entire project budget. So, they can, they can be very expensive. But it is, it is an important consideration, and it's something that you need to consider is what type of benefits are going to be accrued from investing, investing in a corridor like this. And typically, the things are that property values in station areas typically increase. That's one primary benefit you can get from an investment like this.
And why, if, you know, at the right point, if staff can start weighing in on that, because there's all kinds of anecdotal information about whether light rail has a bigger significant impact versus bus.
Right.
And the various options, and I think that's going to factor in, and which option we may want to go with. It's not, to me, it's not just all about moving.
I agree.
Transportation, that.
I agree.
If we're going to be asked in the future to partake and contribute, that we also need to look at the economic benefits of the various options as well. That has to get factored in. Thank you.
Ms. Connolly?
So, looking at your map, it looks like there are five or six, are the white dots, are they stops?
Proposed.
Okay. And you're looking at those, whether it's light rail or BRT?
Yes.
Okay. It seems to me that maybe one of the benefits of BRT would be that you could change the route at some point, if it's not working.
Yes, much more flexible mode. That's right.
So, how much, but there would be still an infrastructure change needed with different kinds of lanes. So, it wouldn't just be easy, like, oh, let's change the bus route to this street.
Yeah. BRT is a, is a blessing because it's a very flexible mode, and it's a curse because it's a very flexible mode, frankly. It is, it is a, the, the common vision for most projects is to create a dedicated guideway, which is infrastructure, which is up, as Dan was pointing out, it's updated stations, it's off-board fare collection, it's dedicated guideway, it's curbs, it's, you know, you're creating infrastructure similar to, that you would for a light rail vehicle. And with that, you've, and you basically committed infrastructure that is going to be there, which is part of this, actually, this development question. You know, what's going to be out there? So, so that's an important part. But, but it gives you the flexibility, as you said, of if you're doing something that's not working, you can change the service, or you can change the direction. And what will happen is, there'll be this vision at this point of a dedicated guideway corridor, and then once the, once the dialogue starts to be on potential property impacts and how it's going to work on traffic, then that level of dedicated guideway starts to get degraded a little bit, you know? And then you've, you've lessened the benefits of your project by, so, so I would say that there, it's, if you think about it in terms of dedicated guideway and, and being able to make these turns and, and other things, then that's the real benefit of BRT. But I would only caution that, you know, you really, you really do want to make the investment to make this thing as effective as it can be, to really reap the benefits of a transit alignment. Okay.
And then as far as those, as far as those stations go, are they set in stone, or are they still flexible?
These were, as I said, we're at like the, we're at the preliminary assessment phase. So, these were the stations that were identified by your city staff, and then we use them for, for the purposes of what we're doing, what we're doing here. We didn't, we didn't talk too much about the entire scope of work. I think Dan talked, talked about it quickly. But the entire scope of work is the demand service plan, which you need for the demand forecasting, the demand forecasting and the cost estimates, then the funding and financing. How could it be funded? And what would it be, what would the commitment be of City of Falls Church or this county? What could you expect from federal sources? What would you potentially have to come up with by yourself? Or what other state sources could potentially be? And then a comparison between the alternatives to give you guys a measure across all alternatives so you can help make a decision, and then a plan for what would come after this. You know, how could you, how could you go forward and implement this at the end? Okay?
Ms. Oliver?
Could we just go back to the slide that had the side-by-side comparisons? That one. So, if I'm just looking at the capital costs and the operating costs, you would just say, well, why would you ever look at light rail versus the BRT? But then you've also got a difference in the number of passengers and the number of trips. What about demand?
Yeah. Demand is the key driver. Like, one of the key differences is, is that you can, you can process more passengers with light rail, light rail vehicles. You can actually train together two or three light rail vehicles, so you get 200, 400, 600, all operating as one vehicle up and down the corridor. Where BRT, you're operating two, three, four buses riding up and down the corridor to handle that same level of demand. So, one of the most important questions that needs to be resolved, and we'll be working on that the next few months, is, and they, they call it, along the corridor, there's one point at which more people are traveling up and down than, you know, there's like one link that's carrying more passengers than everywhere else in the corridor. It's probably potentially through here. You know, you're going to have a lot of people from here accessing the East Falls Church or other people getting to there. So, you want to understand, can, can you accommodate that demand with BRT? Or would, or would be a better investment actually to go with light rail transit? So, demand is a, is a huge part of this question, and will be part of the analysis that we'll be looking at in, in the, in the spring. And the other thing, frankly, is political choice. You know, these are, these are significant investments, both of them. They have, they potentially could have different development benefits, depending on how you look at them. They have different demand benefits. So, it's not, it won't be as easy as, one's cheaper than the other, let's go with that one. There are, there are other broader questions of transit choice that need to be considered.
And I guess my one follow-on question then is psychologically, or in terms of people's propensity to use one versus the other, are there significant differences?
I would not answer that question in a thousand years. I am agnostic in terms of mode. I think you identify the right, the right mode for the right corridor. And I think for that, for that question for here, it is this, this question of demand, this question of political viability. I mean, you guys have seen in Northern Virginia, projects that, I mean, the reality with transit projects is they are very challenging to implement. Roadway project tends to be, you know, you can implement a roadway project in, you know, fewer years than you can a transit project because of everything that goes behind it. And you are, in a case like this, you are reconfiguring a roadway. You are changing a condition that has been in place for 40 or 50 years, and you are competing for a very limited, potentially competing for very, very limited federal funds, and you need to come up with a federal funds. And you need to come up with a way to, to pay for all this. So it's not an easy process. So there needs to be a lot of commitment, uh, to make that work. And that's the question of this study is, is, are you committed? Is Fairfax County committed? Are you ready to say, we've seen what it could be, and we want to go in that direction, and we're ready for everything that that means? Because it's, it gets only harder from here. Uh, you know, this is kind of presenting the results and the concepts and what it could be. And then from here, it starts to be engineering design and property impacts and costs and, uh, catenary or no catenary, you know, very, very, very challenging questions.
Mr. Z?
Thank you. I, and thank you for the presentation and, and all the thinking that's gone into this, even at a conceptual stage. Now, if I'm reading this right and listening to you, it's, the desire then is to have this fully functional by 2040, which is a period of time somewhere in the future. Um, I didn't hear any other numbers here, looking through this, 15 years, maybe a little further out. Fifteen years for a scope project like this, uh, still eludes me. I, I don't think the political will is, uh, is available to, first of all, invest in, uh, let's be honest, four times the cost of, of, of a bus system for, for a light rail transit system. I, I think, you know, the, the con person would say, what's in it for me? And, and why would I want to spend, spend close to a billion dollars when I could get something for far less? That does pretty much the same thing. So I, you know, I've fallen out of love with the light rail. I just don't think it works. And partly the reason I say that is because, uh, none, nothing in here have I heard about a consideration of, uh, other alternative modes of transportation that would use, um, dedicated lanes. Uh, I think it's pretty clear to all of us that, uh, within 10 years, uh, there's going to be an abundance of autonomous vehicles, whether they be cars or buses. Uber's not going to go away. So then we now have a, the ability to, to have, uh, privatized vehicles also operate under the same circumstance. And I think, you know, to limit this discussion to only running on rails or, or bus system, uh, kind of misses the whole point. What's the future going to look like in 15, 20 years? Will there even be a need for this kind of system? And I think that's, you know, we, we have now, just within the last five years, you could get an EZ Pass system that puts you, um, on dedicated lanes, uh, driving personally or riding with somebody. Uh, and, and, uh, there's a small cost for that, but, you know, in retrospect, it's not some breathtaking billion-dollar investment. So, uh, I would say that if you're going to continue with this study, make it worthwhile, you need to consider those things, because I won't be the only person asking that question. Thank you.
Would you like me to answer that?
If you had an answer, sure.
Um, I would say, uh, you know, I saw an interesting thing about autonomous vehicles. I think it was on 60 Minutes just like two weeks ago. They had a whole study about it. And, uh, the, the, uh, you know, Google's looking at them, BMW is looking at them, I think Mercedes, they have a whole, uh, program out in California looking at autonomous vehicles. And, and what they're, what they're trying to do is, they are trying to, uh, make those things as comfortable as possible to make sitting in traffic, uh, more acceptable, you know, so you don't have to worry about, you can work, you can do other things while you're in the car. I haven't heard anything that says that autonomous vehicles are going to clear the roadways of the congestion that's, that's coming. Uh, I think that would be a different, uh, a different, um, uh, potentially a different thing. But I do, I do believe that, um, any type of planning without considering, uh, driverless vehicles or autonomous vehicles in today's day and age is, is you're overlooking what the future would be. I do agree with you there. So there has to be some consideration of what those, uh, what, what would that infrastructure requirement look like, and how would that fit into, uh, the, to what we're looking at here as well?
Vice Mayor Snyder?
More a comment. I'm pretty excited by the prospects of this, um, this study. I, I think, um, if we could turn the clock back and have a metro station somewhere in the city, um, perhaps at, at Washington and Broad, um, that might have been a great thing if we could have possibly done that. This allows us to be on a major new transit line, and I think that's one of the real appeals of it. And when you use, when you look at the route that goes down Roosevelt to, um, to East Falls Church and up Washington Street and over on Route 7, you're probably getting 85% of our business community. Eden Center, Washington Street, um, maybe we could talk about a loop to pick up Pearson Square, maybe, uh, go out 7, you pick up all that there. So this really satisfies a lot of, a lot of business development and business support needs. And frankly, the ability to get around that corridor without having to get into a car is going to be pretty attractive to a lot of people. I, every now and then, when I can't avoid it, end up on Route 7, and it's just getting worse and worse and worse. So I think there's some real exciting possibilities here, and we'll see how it plays out. Thank you.
Sure. Um, okay, I've got a few questions if no one else has any or comments. Um, let me ask you, this may be outside the scope of what you've, you've done, but I maybe have some ideas anyway. Is there any idea about who's going to pay for this thing? Either, um, capital or operational?
We have not yet. That's one, that's one, I said, one of the next phases is how could you pay for this thing? You know, what are the options for funding a, a program like this? So we should have that answer for you in the spring.
But do you have, as I said, generally, we're going to see grants from the federal government, or?
Well, there's, there's a, there's a federal, uh, new starts, uh, process, which, uh, you know, will pay up to, you know, say 40 or 50% of, of projects can be funded by the federal government. But as I said, that's very, very, uh, competitive. And then there's, uh, options like the state, uh, infrastructure money that's available. And then there's also things like innovative finance, like, uh, private, uh, private developer, uh, investments. The city of Alexandria has actually, um, done a few things where they've gotten proffers from, uh, developers to help pay for, uh, infrastructure in the area. So I do think, and then there's also, um, uh, tax or development benefits that potentially could be captured to help pay for it as well. So one of the things we definitely want to do is, we want to make sure that you, uh, that we present to you all of the options that are available to help pay for something like this. Uh, I would say that for a, a light rail option, you know, you're really in, up into the requiring federal funding, uh, to help, to help fund something like that. But maybe in, in, uh, for a BRT section or, uh, some, some portion of that section, you might be able to look at alternate, alternate financial means to help pay for that thing.
In general, what percentage of operating expenses are paid by faregoers? Just in general for projects like this? Is there a rough number?
Yeah. Uh, you know, I think nationwide, it's, it's a very, pretty low number that's paid. Uh, I think, uh, Womata operates at 60 or 70.
Having just looked at the fare box recovery on the systems in the region they run from, a low of around, um, 25% to a high of close to, in the sort of high 70s. And those are on different kinds of bus systems, commuter and local, um, bus systems. So they really, really vary pretty widely.
So if you use a number of, say, 30%, 30, 35%, that would be, to say that the fare box would pay back about that, 30, 30 to 50%, you'd probably be okay with that number.
Any other examples of BRT in the area that are somewhat similar to what we're talking about right now?
Metro Way, um, which is in Alexandria. It's going to expand into Arlington. It's been open for about 18 months.
Okay.
We could certainly get you some data on how that is going, what that system looks like.
Okay. Um, let me ask you about the improvements needed for the bus. I mean, for example, like Route 7 in Falls Church is two lanes each direction. If you're talking about a dedicated lane, are you talking about basically restricting unrestricted traffic to one lane, and then the other be dedicated? Or what do you, what would be proposed for Falls Church?
Yeah, there's, there's a couple of options. It's one of the things, like, for, for a place like Falls Church, like where, where it's a four-lane section, that's what we talked about, this, the idea of a bat lane is what we have assumed. And that would have to be, you know, you, you guys would have to, uh, do a lot of work. But that basically is restricting, uh, auto travel in that right, right-hand lane to only turning traffic. So the left-hand lane would, would be, uh, handling the through traffic, and the other lane would be for dedicated, uh, uh, transit as well as the turning vehicles.
So that could create a huge bottleneck for regular traffic?
Well, it could. Um, you know, in, in, uh, right, uh, so, so basically, uh, and it's the, really the challenge of, uh, constructing a transit alignment on a, on an existing roadway. So, uh, in, in planning theory, if you're to constrict the, the, um, lanes on Route 7, then some of those people are going to go elsewhere, right? They're no longer going to use Route 7. It's not going to have to carry the same amount. Like, say you have 40,000 a day, you're not going to have to accommodate 40,000 a day in the one lane, because they're going to make, they're going to make other choices. So that, the challenge is, is how do you reflect that in your policy decisions? Because technically, that's very difficult to even reflect in, in any of the tools that transportation planners have. So it's almost like you have to make a, a decision based on what you think the future would be, and to say, is that, is that something we want in the city or not?
And the stations would be in the center, not off to the side, generally? You're talking about the, the center lane being the travel lane for the BRT lane?
The bat, the bat, the idea of the bat lane is actually a right lane.
Oh, so that it would actually be the stations to be on the right-hand side?
That's correct. They'll be on the curb, yeah.
Okay, okay. Um, and let me ask you on, for the light rail, you had said that mixed traffic is kind of, I wouldn't say sketchy, but, uh...
It's unusual.
Okay. And so if there were to be light rail, would you suggest it be the dedicated lane? Or what's your thoughts on that?
Um, you know, uh, you're, you're trying to, uh, with, with everything you can, you're trying to create a dedicated lane. But like, a light rail can operate, uh, like, uh, the idea of a bat lane could work for, for a light rail vehicle as well, where it's only for, for turning traffic in a light rail vehicle. Or you could create a dedicated lane and then try and only accommodate, um, um, the remaining traffic in the, in the, in the, what the lane that's left. And most likely, you would put the LRT in the middle and then have only one travel lane through downtown, uh, Falls Church, uh, and then try and restrict any travel in that, in that left lane, which, uh, tends to be a fairly, um, unacceptable condition for, uh, you know? So, so really what you, you'd want to make a decision on, um, how are we going to accommodate it? Is that going to be in mixed traffic? Is that going to be in a bat lane? Or is that going to be a dedicated lane, which would require, obviously, additional room, which would then have an effect on your, uh, land uses on both sides of the corridor?
Okay. And the, um, uh, let's see what else I've got here. Were you going to connect to the West Falls Church metro? I know you mentioned East Falls Church metro.
Yeah, we have, we, we've assumed a connection. I think, uh, we've been talking a little bit about this internally, uh, that e, e, each of the, uh, alignments now assume a connection at West Falls Church as well. There's a station that connects to West Falls Church as well. We haven't talked about the design or how that makes the connection, but for right now, it's assumed that that connection is made as well.
Okay. And then any thoughts about undergrounding wires or, um, rapid, like recharge, so that you don't need to have the overhead wires?
Right. Those are, yeah, you've done a little bit of research, I can tell. So, uh, those are definitely options, and they're, they're options that are developing in areas where the, uh, overhead wires aren't, uh, preferable, like in downtowns. So they've, they've looked at underground, uh, undergrounding of the electrical wires, uh, of the electricity. Oh, sorry. Somebody wants me to stop turning it off and turning it back on again, I can see. They've taken all control away from me, just telling me to stop doing it. Uh, those, so those are all, those are all definitely options that, that could be explored are, uh, you know, uh, burying the electrical wires, or even running for short sections on a, um, a charged battery where you could go for a while without, uh, without needing the, uh, electrical infrastructure. So those things, it could be explored in the city for sure.
Okay. Um, let me see what else I've got as far as my notes here. Uh, I would say that I'd like the alignment that you proposed, going through to the East Falls Church metro and coming back and sort of ignore, uh, avoiding our historic district. I think that's a preferable alignment. And I guess you, uh, didn't answer Ms. Oliver's question, I know on purpose, but is there some thought that, for example, people are more likely to take light rail, because it's light rail, as opposed to riding on buses? I mean, I understand that maybe there's sort of politically charged, some of the things have happened recently. But in general, are there studies that show that people are, you know, kind of twice as likely to ride light rail as there are buses and things like that?
I mean, it's, it's, it's like kind of a modal preference question. And really, what you'll find is, is it's really the question of, of, uh, speed and reliability are the primary drivers of ridership. So if you are in light rail, uh, for, typically because it's almost always dedicated, and, uh, it's, uh, it's a, it's a structured service, it's very fast and very reliable. So if you were to make the commitment to create a similarly fast and similarly reliable BRT system in the corridor by creating those dedicated lanes and not giving in to, you know, mixing it up with traffic or whatever in sections, then you would expect to get similar, uh, ridership on both systems, because it's, it matches in its speed and reliability. The, the preference question is one that is a, is a question of a lot of study, is will people ride light rail or will they, will they ride bus? And I've seen it both sides. I can't tell you that's been resolved in, in either way. There was, for a while, more literature in the United States on light rail, because there was more systems in place. But as more BRT systems come online, then there seems to be an evening out of the, of the preference between both modes.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions, folks on council or comments?
You haven't spoken about the traffic signal prioritization, which I presume you're considering. Could you kind of talk us through what's?
Sure.
Possible?
Yeah. Let me go back to one of Dan's slides. He kind of, uh, yeah, so, um, in here, like, uh, any type of, uh, as we said, any type of get dedicated guideway has a whole bunch of, of, um, uh, things that come along with it that we've talked about, like improved stations, uh, next bus information in the station, off-board fare collection, so you can pay off-board and get on very quickly. And then there's this question of, uh, transit signal priority, which is basically a system, uh, that I think is being, that's actually currently being, uh, added to Route 7 through one of Womata's, uh, grants, that, uh, the traffic, uh, signal infrastructure, um, has a receiver on it that allows for, uh, a extension of green time if the bus is approaching, or a shortening of the red time if the bus is approaching of that intersection, so that, uh, it gets a, a travel time benefit. I will say that across the system, that benefit is, uh, you know, it's, it's not a huge benefit over time, because you're, uh, it's only a few seconds at each intersection. But it is, it is a way, it's one of the methods that, that people are implementing to continue to try and improve the travel time, uh, speed and reliability through a system. So when we talk about, so that's one of the investments that would be expected of either one of these modes, that you would take a look at this, um, traffic signal priority as your, it's not a preemption. Well, and I want to make that clear, is that as a transit vehicle is approaching, it doesn't automatically turn it to green. It just adjusts, adjusts the traffic signal if it's, uh, you know, as I said, extends the green time for a few seconds, or it shortens the red time for a few seconds. It doesn't, doesn't preempt that signal and, uh, affect traffic. Okay?
Okay. Are there any other questions? If not, I want to thank you very much, all of you, for coming out this evening, for all the hard work you've done on this study. And we look forward to hearing, uh, your report later on. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Shields, why don't we, if we can, try to fit in some of our other business before our EDA section?
Well, one thing that we were going to do.
Oh, was insight, I'm sorry.
Have an opportunity for the council to, um, meet with their VDOT representatives. We're very thankful that they're here again tonight. Uh, Ms. Baxter is the project lead for, um, the I-66 Inside the Beltway project, and her staff are here. And I think really the purpose of this segment of tonight's agenda is, is just to allow, if there are any follow-up questions for VDOT staff. The council, we do have later on the agenda, at the, last thing on your agenda later tonight is consideration of, of a, a resolution that would provide our, our voting member to our regional body, Mr. Snyder, some direction from council. But first, I think this is just an opportunity to, uh, discuss it a bit further with VDOT staff.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead and switch out our NVTC friends to our VDOT folks? And Paul, why don't you stick up here if you can? Uh, we'd love to hear your input, uh, and your thoughts on, uh, some of the I-66 matters. But why don't you all come on up? And hopefully, we can find some chairs for all of you. And I think, as Mr. Shields noted, this is really just a time to get some questions, or if there are any comments for our friends from VDOT, we can do that at this point. And later in the meeting, we'll have some, um, council discussion about a position to take.
And Mayor, as they are gathering, um, I talked to Ms. Baxter about giving any updates that they might have since, uh, the briefing by Deputy Secretary Donahue, and then they're available for your questions and comments.
Okay. Well, thank you all for coming out again. Um, and if there is any, uh, updates, we'd certainly like to maybe start with those. Is there any new information since we've last met?
I don't think there's any new information to share. Um, I think the public meetings were well-attended in every location. Uh, we did go out last week to Loudoun County, and we did a public meeting out there, um, which was an interesting evening, a very long night there. But, um, we, um, have, I think, consistent- But, um, we, um, have, I think, consistently tried to work on streamlining the message about what this project is. I think there's a lot of misinformation out there right now on this project, such as the money can only be spent in the shaded area that surrounds the corridor. We've really had to do a good job explaining that this is a regional project, um, to provide person throughput for all the regions that move through 66 inside the corridor and the mode shift that we're expecting through these investments. So we continue to work on that message. Um, we are anxious to get the jurisdictions' comments on the framework agreement, so we can continue that, moving that ball forward. I'm working with our deputy secretary on what the CTB presentation will look like next week. I think it's going to look fairly similar to what you all had seen. However, we are going to take all the public comments, like the larger topic comments that surround the reverse commute, enforcement, the toll prices, um, the extended rush hour period, some of the changes with or without the project. Those are probably our larger topic comments we've received from the public, and we're going to condense those into some slides and provide that context to the CTB, so they have a broader perspective of the project and not just, you know, the project and what the framework agreement is looking like at that time.
And could you update us on the schedule going forward? In other words, what, uh, kind of action do you anticipate at what time? And what's the general timetable for various, uh, items going forward?
Sure. Um, just to confirm, next week's, um, CTB presentation is a workshop format where we would just give them an overarching, um, uh, discussion of what the project is, these comments that I talked about, um, and as well as the framework agreement. Uh, that will be the first really that the CTB has heard about those, um, particular items. Uh, we are planning on having a work session while we're down there with, um, our legal team and NVTC's legal team to go through the comments and make progress there. That will actually happen after the workshop. So they will know that, uh, MBTC's intention is to at least brief their commission, um, and Kelly, jump in if I'm wrong, uh, the beginning of November, correct? The November 5th meeting. So MBTC will then get a, a chance to see where we're at with the framework agreement in November. The Commonwealth Transportation Board convenes again here in Northern Virginia on December 8th and 9th. Prior to that, we would expect MBTC to, um, pass an action on, uh, the framework agreement for the project and how, um, it essentially describes how the project selection process will happen, how the monies will be spent, you know, the timing of any potential future widening, how we evaluate to get to that point, um, if it is necessary. All of those items will be in that framework agreement. We will, um, have that in advance as well for MBTC to look at in December, and then is, also give it to CTB members to agree to execute in December 8th and 9th. At that time, I'll also be asking CTB to provide us project funding for the capital investment to build the, um, tolling infrastructure along 66 inside the Beltway, as well as additional revenue to fund multimodal projects to be implemented in 2016, um, essentially as part of like the Group One multimodal projects. Uh, that will not be over and above the call for projects that I anticipate, um, MBTC to, um, initiate in 2016. This is the initial, um, funding of projects that are ready to be implemented for that. So that will all be one, um, financial ask from CTB to borrow that will be used to, um, we will fund, you know, we will pay that, you know, interest-free loan back, uh, through our debt service, that initial ask for the capital costs to build the tolling infrastructure. And then those net revenues, um, once we, um, turn the toll system on, will then be distributed, um, to MBTC for the additional ongoing multimodal improvements that will happen over the course of a 40-year agreement with MBTC.
Okay. Uh, that's a lot, a lot going on. Do we have any questions, Mr. Brug?
And thanks again for all your work on this. Um, I had a quick, a couple of quick questions. At least in this phase, how many public sessions have you all had?
Um, as far as public outreach, we're well over 70 at this point. Um, meetings, like formal public information meetings, we're at seven exactly. We had three back in June. We had four this time around. We have been invited to many civic associations, um, as, and homeowners' associations, and we continue to be invited to those. I was at the Kiwanis Club last week. So, a lot.
And how many of these are you roughly actually getting comments?
I would say every single meeting, we have a Q and A session.
So about 70 roughly, maybe, that you guys have been hearing comments on?
Uh, that is correct.
Seventy plus. So what type of comments have you been getting?
Uh, the comments, uh, very high-level comments on seventeen dollars for a round-trip toll, and that's basically the, um, I guess, the campaign that, um, is out there right now about the toll rates that we published. Just for reference, we, we publicized a fairly conservative estimated toll rate that was for an average, uh, typical trip taken in the corridor during the peak time. So in the peak direction, whereas at its heavy, highest demand at the, you know, highest time that the, everyone wants to be on the road, we had, um, I have it with me here, we had, um, it's eight and nine, um, I just don't know which direction particularly, what it was, in the peak direction. And then we had like a dollar or two. Is it the last one? Let me get to it really quick.
So, I mean, the numbers aren't, so the price of the tolling is one. Are there sort of three key things that you guys have heard, maybe five key things you've heard?
Um, the other thing is the reverse commute story. Why toll the reverse commute? Um, so that is another, um, uh, there's a lot of technical information that we have put together. We'll actually be presenting that tomorrow to the Arlington County Board, and we can certainly share that with you all as well. Um, why toll the reverse commute? What, what's the traffic like? Um, we have had, had a lot of questions about, um, enforcement. Why can't we just have better enforcement in this corridor for the HOV-2 restriction? Um, and that would just solve our congestion problems. Well, it doesn't address the reverse commute, certainly. Um, and then it also doesn't address the fact that, um, we have an extended rush hour. And that's been another part of this story, is why the two-and-a-half change to the four-hour change for the rush hour. Um, and that is definitely in, in correlation with the traffic patterns that we see in, in the corridor, and I guess the distribution over time that we want to do with, um, uh, this project. So that is why we are, um, doing, uh, an extended amount of time. And that actually is mirroring what the existing outside-the-beltway tolling schedule looks like currently, although with, when those improvements come along, that will, that will still be a 24/7 hot lane on outside the Beltway. We will continue to be part-time.
Have you heard, um, any comments from the public about how all this may change their behaviors on the road?
We have. Um, we've had a lot of people talk about, uh, some of the struggles that they might have to pick up a third person when it goes HOV-T, HOV-3. Uh, there are concerns about that transition corridor-wide, and I think a lot of that can be solved through, um, number one, the parking rides that we're building as part of outside the Beltway, but also number two, the ability to spend this toll revenue on additional parking rides for people that want to make that shift in mode. Um, we have provided additional information about what happens to the HOV-2 drivers when it becomes HOV-3, and we've given a different mode split about how those behaviors, um, have changed. And some people revert back to using their same auto by themselves and just pay to be in, but some people get on transit. However, when we make those comparisons, I think an important note to make is that the transit that we're comparing that to is the existing program transit. So we're not even taking into account all of these future planned multimodal improvements that we can fund through this project. Um, we're making a lot of those assumptions about how people change their behaviors.
Do we, um, and this is a question for staff perhaps, do we, one of the questions that I had is what does $10 million buy you? Because that was sort of, the best estimates were $10 million a year for the entire corridor area. Do we get any understanding of what $10 million gets you? Like, maybe not even on an off-ramp?
Yeah. I, I mean, I think the, the big question is, you know, how the projects would be allocated through the NVTC decision-making process and-
But fair to say that $10 million in reality, in today's dollars, is not going to buy any meaningful improvements?
If I could, I think the, the scope of the plans and projects are extensive and certainly more than the 10 million per year. I think the criteria in the selection process will be very critical, and I think as MBTC and locality staff have looked at it, one of the big questions is whether we can dead finance-
My understanding is that part of the reason why this is being touted as being a beneficial program is the revenue that these programs are going to generate for multimodal and easing traffic. And it comes out to $10 million. But nobody is at the point of saying, this is the improvements that we're likely to see. So it, it, I want to get a better sense of what types of projects we could potentially do with this money. You know, even if you pull it out for $40 million and say you're going to save up the money at the end of the 40 years, you're going to dump a ton of money into intermodal, what does that get you? So I'd like to get some answers to that, sort of what is it, what type of improvement? And I know it's going to be left up under the current framework under, um, to the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission, however that shakes out, but getting a sense to our public, who's going to ultimately pay for this through tolls, of what they're going to be getting in reality at the end of the day is going to be really important. So I want to move on from that and just kind of go back to the 70-plus hearing sessions you've had or outreach programs. Has there been any type of changes to what's being proposed based on what you've heard? Or is that going to come at a future stage? Because I know we've been getting sort of an earful, if you will, from our constituents as we're going out, but has there been any changes or is this sort of like, it's done, here you go, public, we're just pumping out information? And I've asked this numerous times, and I was led at one point to believe that there were change, opportunity for changes, and then I realized quickly there actually wasn't, and that it was more of information presenting rather than open dialogue. So with where we're at now, with the 70-plus, have any changes been made so far to what's being proposed? Whether it's hours, tolls, reverse commutes, use of funding, anything like that?
Um, yes, a couple of changes have been made. The first change was, um, in our, um, constrained longer-range plan proposal, when this project was, um, put in earlier this year, we proposed that in 2017, this project would open up as an HOV-3 project. And we, um, had the public meetings in June and heard a lot from people that they needed time to make that transition, as well as recognizing that there were improvements associated with outside the Beltway, such as these parking rides and longer-haul trips that would give people the ability to change their behaviors. And then gradually get to three, when the entire system, when outside came online and it would be in, in HOT-3 facility, we can then turn the corridor into an HOV-3 facility. So that is one thing that has changed. And we currently, although we're adopting a plan that has HOV-3, um, we are strongly considering and will likely be forward in the future with an amendment to embrace the HOV-2, um, concept in, in advance. The other thing that we did, and this is in listening to, uh, in getting at your $10 million statement, one thing I want to say about that is, you know, that's year one, that's expected to grow beyond, um, you know, that first year. So it's $10 million the first year, and then it, it goes up incrementally from there, um, and definitely has changes when we go to HOV-3 as well, as far as what the revenue is. So by about that point, we're in the 20 to 24 million dollar net revenue range, and those are 20, $14. But with that money, another thing that we heard, um, from the public, uh, from actually the jurisdictions, is that they wanted operational money to go along with the toll revenue. So initially, the Commonwealth of Virginia was in a, um, doing this through their ability through CTB to fund, um, or to transform the, the, the 66 into an HOT, HOV facility under the authority of the Commonwealth Transportation Board. Instead, we have now, um, entered into a pilot program that we are drafting the proposal currently to Federal Highway Administration that allows us to be in the value pricing pilot program, which is a demonstration program with federal highways that introduces congestion pricing to manage congestion. And that program, um, allows us to provide better flexibility in the funding, in the funding source. So it would not just be capital, it would also be operational. And that was a really big deal to the jurisdictions to have both of those revenue abilities in this 40-year term agreement. So that is something that we've also changed based on input from the jurisdictions. I, I don't think that it's over yet because we still have the design public hearing that's happening in January. There will be all kinds of dialogue on, you know, how that gets rolled out as far as where the gantries will be and how that will work. But as we move forward with this project, we are continuously taking information and putting it into the project with the idea that we're maintaining the overall project goal of moving more people through the corridor. I mean, that's our intent, and, you know, we, to back off, let's say, we've heard, why do you have to toll the, the airport users, for example? And we certainly, um, respect, um, you know, what Dulles provides to this region, but we also want to make sure that Dulles knows that anyone that uses 66 on, inside the Beltway has a reliable trip to the airport as well. So we're not going to back off things that have the ability to move more people reliably through the corridor. Um, and that, that's something that we're going to be steadfast on.
Other comments, questions? Ms. Oliver?
I just kind of want to build on the question of what does $10 million get you? In that we just heard a presentation that said that the capital cost for the, the least expensive of the, of the, you know, the BRT versus the LRT has an upfront capital cost of $250 million. And when you hear a presentation that talks about one, one potential thing that somebody might do, and it's 25 times the cost of the total annual, um, benefit in the first year, it's hard to see where $10 million is going to be meaningful.
I don't, I don't disagree with that. If you were to think that this money would fund one project standalone by itself, but the idea of, of this funding is to enhance a lot of the transit that we enjoy within this corridor as well. So if we could, for example, put money towards a local bus service that might need some extra dollars to reduce its headways, provide better service, have more reliable bus schedules, then there's an, this is a new revenue, revenue source to be able to do something like this. This isn't necessarily, well, we'll take the $20 million and we're going to build, you know, BRT on this stretch of road. Certainly, it would be eligible if that would move more people off of 66, absolutely. But this is more to mitigate and fix some of the, and enhance some of the, the roadways and transit services that we have in the vicinity of 66 to better, um, move more people through the corridor. And incentivize people to either carpool and be on 66 as well.
But one of the alternatives that was also presented was, what, what happens if you just improve existing bus services? And the amount of time it took off the trip and the ability of, to move more people through the corridor was miniscule.
To improve local bus service, but to fund additional bus service over, over top of that, or have a better, um, uh, I guess, turnaround time for a lot of these buses. A lot of these long-haul buses, for example, from an operational perspective, cannot even make a second trip, even if they wanted to go halfway back up the corridor, um, to, to do that. They can't do it because they get back on 66 in the reverse direction and they sit in the same traffic that everyone else is. There's a lot of abilities to, to cut back on some of the operational expenses of these buses by giving them the ability to make multiple trips within a rush hour period, as well as, you know, enhance over existing. So there's going to be a lot of fine-tuning in this corridor, absolutely. And, and again, that is the administration's sole reason for, um, looking at NVTC to, to put these dollars for, uh, towards, so we can understand with the transit folks in the room where these, you know, where everything needs to be backfilled. And there are some projects, and I mean, Kelly, correct me if I'm wrong, there are some projects that are well under, you know, $500,000 that make improvements in this corridor.
Well, there's, the projects that are on the basis-
No, Kelly, sorry.
The projects that form the basis for, um, the selection are ones that came from the so-called 2012, 2013 study. There are about 200 of them. We spent a great deal of time in the last several months refining those to look at what might be easily implemented. I think the question is, how well can we- I think the question is, how well can we leverage these funds, both in terms of matching funds that, to other projects and then also whether or not we'll be able to do any debt financing?
Okay, what other questions do we have from other folks? Vice Mayor Snyder?
Thank you very much for all your work. I don't know anybody that's worked harder than Amanda and her team under sometimes trying circumstances. So, I'm not, I'll try not to be too trying tonight. So, I'm interested in mode share. So, when this is fully implemented, what is, what do you project is your mode share for single occupancy vehicles versus HOV vehicles versus transit? And maybe you don't have the answer to that tonight, but I'm sort of interested because the realities of I-66 is that literally is an interstate that ends at the Potomac River and the Teddy Roosevelt Bridge. And the river isn't going to go away and the bridge probably is going to be expanded. And even if it does, you get the Constitution Avenue and federal government's not going to agree to chew up the National Mall for commuters. And then you have a similar sort of circumstance. The minute that you turn off 66, you've got a red light, right? At, at Sycamore Street, at, you get off any direction, you've got a red light within a block. And then you have already crowded arterial roads, which is something pretty significant to our, very significant to our, our, our folks. So, what's the mode share going to be? A, what are the numbers per mode? And then what's the mode share going to be? Are we just simply putting more cars on 66 or are we actually going to succeed in changing the mode share, which I think we absolutely have to do to make the corridor workable?
Do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I'll start, certainly. The...
Microphone.
Oh, yes.
Thank you. While I don't have numbers memorized, I will say that the, the report that's been discussed a few times tonight is the 2012, 2013 I-66 multimodal study. Very comprehensive study of all travel east-west, even though it has I-66 in the name. It included the parallel arterials as well and, and the buses and the metro rail, et cetera. So, there is, and I think your first question was, at full, full implement, implementation, what would be the mode share? And we did see in that study, an increase of as many as 40,000 more people traveling, not cars, people traveling through the corridor on all modes, on all facilities, not just I-66, in the future. And there's a table in that document that I've, I can see it in my mind's eye, that shows by mode, by auto, by bus, by rail, how those changes take place over the, over into the future.
So, it really goes back to, to me, the fundamental question. Take, step back from our own particular interests, and we certainly do have a lot, and it's our job to represent those. In terms of the corridor, we've got to make a major, major mode shift because DC is claiming more and more their roads for bike lanes. They're just, it's just not, it's going to be tougher and tougher to drive into DC. And it's already tough and going to get tougher and tougher to drive on our arterial roads. So, if we're not changing the mode share dramatically with this, we're kind of spending a lot of money to just speed people into gridlock. So, that's the largest concern I have from a regional standpoint is that we actually make a significant change in how people get around because we're going to have to. So, I'd appreciate any follow-up that you can provide me on that. Thank you.
Okay, are there other questions or comments? Mr. Agnino?
Can you speak to the impacts that are expected on the alternates to 66 for us? That's 50, 29, Route 7. I know at the last Mary Ellen Henderson meeting, there, there were boards up that showed very modest changes in traffic on those roads, yet the commentary, at least in the back of the room, was, "Once you put up the toll numbers, I'm not going to drive on 66, I'm going to use other routes."
Sure, I'll, I'll take that question. The, the, just as a bit of background, in terms of how we arrived at the information about diversion, we, we term that as diversion, is the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments maintains a travel forecasting model that many of the people in this room have probably been involved at some point in using that travel demand model to estimate, when you make a change for a project, whether it's the, the proposed light rail or BRT on Route 7 or, or this project, what would be the implications of that? So, we did the same thing. We used that model to determine, and we, and we represented this project in that model to determine those, those things that you've seen in some public meetings. So, yes, there, we did not see, what happens is, the, the traffic that is currently on 66, if some of, if some of that traffic moves off of 66, it doesn't all just immediately go to the adjacent facility. Some of it forms various, forms other carpools, some of it moves to transit, some of it moves to multiple other facilities. So, it gets scattered along, in a lot of different places. So, you don't, we didn't see in our forecasting, a lot of concentrated impact in any one location. It was a little bit here, a little bit there. And that was, that was one of the things we found from the work. So, that's why it appeared, when you looked at those graphics, that not, not a lot of impact. And that's, that's true because it's a little bit in many places, including other modes as well.
Did you run the model with different tolling amounts? What's... I'd be happy to pay a dollar to use the highway, but if it was $9, I might just look for another route.
Understood. Great question because it, it, being a variable toll congestion pricing concept, instead of testing different toll prices, it, well, effectively, they did test different toll prices, but only for the purpose of finding the toll diversion curve that is necessary to get, to keep the traffic flowing. You know, the objective is to have the, the vehicles on 66, including buses and van pools and autos and carpools, moving at at least 45 miles per hour. So, they would iterate in the, in the process that's well above our, well, not, not above his skill level, but above mine, of the, they iterate, so they effectively did test, or the computer tested many, many, many different toll rates to find that sweet spot where anything higher would drive off too much, anything lower would not drive off enough, drive off, to divert enough. So, so Steve may want to add something if he, if he wishes.
Yeah, it's one of the, well, the, the way the models work is with a toll diversion curve, you're, you're going to get a distribution of people who are going to pay different amounts. And so, as you said, you, I don't hear myself at all, that, that you wouldn't pay $9, but you'd definitely pay a dollar. People's values of time change, you know, for, for what you need to get to. If you have a really important meeting at work and, and you're late because, you know, the dog threw up or whatever happened at home that caused you late, leave later than you normally would have, you know, but I, I have a client meeting, I need to get there. You know, suddenly, my, my price point becomes much higher to use the facility to have that, that, that reliable trip. And really, you know, as that price gets higher and higher, you are pushing more people away or attracting fewer people to the facility and selling off that excess capacity. And the thing we've learned through, you know, the, the Beltway hot lanes and managed lanes around the country and around the world is, it's not necessarily something that someone does every day. There's this idea that, "I'm not going to pay $17 a day," you know, is not what people typically do with these type of facilities. It's, it's a lot of different users using it some. So, today, it might be me, tomorrow, it might be Amanda, tomorrow, it might be you. So, people shift off using the facility based on their values of time for, for the trips that they need to make.
And I guess one thing, just to add to that, too, is not only shifting off the roads, but shifting the time that you travel. Some people might say, "Well, you know what? If I get onto the toll road at 5:30, it's going to be 50 cents for me to go this route. I know if I get on 8 o'clock, it's going to cost me $5. I'm going to get up early a couple of days and get in." They're going to change their time within that, if they want to consistently use that facility, they're going to also change their time of travel as well to pay the price that works for them to get that reliable trip. So, there's a lot of variations in that model that, that, that occur in order to incentivize people to stay on 66 as much as possible. We, our goal is not to make money and price people off the road. We want people on the road as much as possible. We would prefer them to be free because that means they're in a carpool, and that's where we like to get to. And the only way to do that is to incentivize people through money, is to say, "If you're in a carpool, you have a free trip." Then it incentivizes more carpools to form. And that's what, the difference that you're seeing, that's our reverse commute story. You're looking at two, the same roadway, one's restricted during the day and one's not restricted during the day. And guess what? Everyone piles on the reverse direction at the peak time, all at one time. They have no incentive to carpool, they have no incentive to change the time of their travel and spread out that curve. So, where you have like a really high peak hump of traffic above capacity, you actually have a bull during the managed lanes because people are playing by the rules and trying to HOV and they spread out that, that time. So, the dynamic between those two facilities are somewhat extreme, depending on what time of day. It's an interesting phenomenon as traffic along the corridor.
Okay. Well, listen, unless we have any other comments, we do have a pretty full agenda still ahead for us. But thank you all for coming out once again, and I'm sure we'll be having a continuing conversation with you all. Thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Why don't we take a five-minute break and let some of the folks clear out and let our EDA members come and join us at the table? Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm, I'm probably going to stay to listen in. Why not? It's, it's too late now.
No, actually, yeah. You got it.
Thank you very much. For your attention.
Question to answer?
Well, if I got to throw our answers.
Much, much earlier.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we're...
That's our job, isn't it? We're, we're not...
I think for typical, uh, Route 7.
I don't know if we...
Hello?
It answers. Where we're going to get the money from?
Very packed agenda. Planning commission was very busy, too. Hard to figure out which place to be.
Right, right. But, I mean, if the first was, and everything, I guess.
They were going to do the holiday ending, I guess. Saying it's hard to choose which meeting to go to.
Holiday end one.
Set all those transportation.
Well, that's what I haven't done.
It's like, sometimes we have a special...
Semi-lapse.
It's not, you need to buy your...
Karen slipped away and I kind of...
Yeah, so you're traveling at certain times, you get a good deal.
I guess the reality is, we have an election on the 3rd.
Yeah, I mean, after that could be that, plus Thursday.
Yeah, it's still going to be a lot.
A lot of our controversy is really the market.
Maybe there's no difference, but...
I definitely...
Traffic congestion.
I'd like to do a parking game.
I think our development's going to do that. Not narrow it, but make it so congested that people are going down this morning.
I looked at those numbers. It says, the comparison to Seattle, Seattle today, Tyson's in 20. Nevertheless, it's, it's a lot.
You can't imagine what something else is going to be in the future. What you're trying to say, what is it possible to imagine? If you think of Seattle, you know what that's going to involve?
Is it going to drive traffic relative to the few traffic they get to Tyson? Not much.
So, and I don't think that's enough, but that's why I say, like, I still don't see much. So much, everybody that's not located, that everybody local, but it's going to be...
Except there's few alternatives. For some becoming... Except, except for... A lot of dresses.
Or around the Beltway.
But people will find...
What Arlington wanted to show is where, you know, one of the... To make a point of, a lot of people... And they also asked for...
This one's taken.
Well, it looked like he was, that's letter from the past.
10 days or something? I've been trying to actually get word, because I need the bill.
Oh, you're welcome.
I'm trying not to comment on all these things. I'm just going to, um, just stay quietly to the side.
All right, if we can, why don't we go ahead and get our meeting back, back on track? So, folks are going to be taking off, if you couldn't, wouldn't mind, heading on out. But if you're going to be staying for the meeting, if you could take your seat, and we'll go ahead and get started, the remainder of the, the meeting. This is a joint meeting, this portion is a joint meeting with the Economic Development Authority. So, if we get all the members of the Economic Development Authority to join us at the table, hopefully, no one will need to sit on anyone's lap and we'll be able to find some seats for everyone, but...
Take what?
All right, Barry, maybe you could find a spot as well up here at the table. So, now, come on up at the table if you can.
Is this yours, Wyatt? Yeah, but that's all right. You slide over, we're going to get you a spot right there.
So, again, welcome to the, members of the Economic Development Authority. It's always great to have you guys with us, and we're excited to hear about your, your annual retreat and your work plan for the coming year. Mr. Shields, is there anything you want to say before we get started?
I think it's just a good opportunity. One of the comments that the council's had many times is wanting to have more direct interaction with its boards and commissions so that missions are aligned and that everyone knows what the others doing and the communication is improved. And so, that's what tonight's, the spirit of tonight.
Great. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Novotny. Thank you for coming and thank you all for your good work, but let's hear what you have to say.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Very happy to be here. Very much appreciate the invite. You know, one of the topics we also talked about at our retreat was, you know, better communication with city council, planning commission, other, other commissions and boards. So, this is, this is perfect, well-timed comment. You know, one of the things that we, is this working okay? One of the things that we, we did talk about is trying to report up to city council on a more regular basis. I think when we talked about it at the retreat, we talked about it, is one person coming out, somehow I convinced everybody to, to make it out. So, I appreciate, I appreciate everyone making it out for this joint work session.
any information as we go through. So the first topic was the use of land banking funds, and it's something that the fund was set up after the 301 West Broad Street project went through with the Harris Teeter, and the funds were, some of those funds were devoted to EDA, and we put it into this land banking fund. The next, we talked about quite a bit parking. The third is marketing, marketing of the city in general and trying to attract new businesses and such. The fourth is metro shuttle. We had a lot of discussion about how to coordinate some of the existing and many of the future anticipated shuttles that are supposed to come online. We also focused in on the approval process and advocating for a project if it's something the EDA felt strongly about supporting. We talked about communication between the boards and flipping the page, how do you help, you know, continue to make Falls Church more bikeable and walkable? The fiscal impact model drew a lot of discussion, as I think many have been discussing in general, and then we talked about the public plaza, which I was fortunate enough to talk with you all about at a recent meeting. And then finally, we talked about this idea of an additional special, or additional downtown improvements and maybe some kind of special projects team where we might have a couple of people on EDA working with other boards and commissions to try to tackle collectively, you know, some assignment, some special project that City Council or staff or others may have in mind. It would be in coordination with staff. We don't know what that is yet, but we thought it was a pretty neat idea and something that was worthy of going up on the board and thinking about if there's a project that comes our way that might be suited for that. So those were the topics, and I think if it makes sense, we could, you know, go back to the top of the list, and let's kind of go back through those topics and, you know, just pause on each one, and then we can have a little bit of discussion if it's warranted, and if not, we can go to the next.
Sounds good.
Okay. So, so starting back at the top of the list, the use of the land banking funds, and you notice there are names next to these. We assigned people to each of these, and so there was, you know, some real credible action, and we'll continue to follow up as a board at our regular meetings on each of these topics. But what we did is we, Brian and Bob were, they volunteered for subcommittee to develop a list of potential uses for these funds, and then we also talked about revisiting the policy as needed. One of the things, as you know, with the plaza space on Broad Street that I presented to City Council very recently, one of the motions that the EDA recently made was to commit to up to $250,000 of that fund to go towards the public plaza should the City Council and the city move forward on doing, on making that plaza happen. And, you know, so we haven't delved into it any further, but let me go ahead and pause there for a moment, see if any of my colleagues want to jump in on this particular topic and just generally open it up to see if there are other thoughts City Council may have for, you know, what we should be thinking about for this particular fund.
Do you guys have anything? So let me ask you, what is the amount of money you have, land banking funds?
I believe it's 1.8 million.
Okay. And how do you guys want to deploy that? Do you have a policy?
There is a policy and guidelines document that was reviewed.
There was a policy and guidelines document that was created and reviewed as part of setting up the land banking fund. We can share that with you guys if you haven't seen that lately. And we have been working on trying to evaluate different ways to consider specific parcels. You know, I sat down with Rick and Becky last year and looked through, and, you know, there's something like 320 parcels, commercial land parcels in the whole city. There's not that many to even consider, and then when you consider which ones are in certain locations, the way you go about evaluating land to acquire for various reasons as outlined in the policy and guidelines document, it's not a huge number. So the part of what we're trying to do is be well-prepared for the timing of a good parcel to acquire. As I understand it, that was a key part of the parcel that was ultimately part of the Harris Teeter project, was the timing of being available to go after that. So we're trying to put together some thoughts on what to look out for, location, other projects adjacent, that sort of thing. But we're also trying to be open-minded, not limiting it to just parcel consolidation for larger projects. We're also looking at locations where that, those funds could be useful for other forms of economic development, such as the plaza that Mike mentioned.
Yeah, and without getting into the detail of the policy, it's a pretty extensive policy, and I commend Rick Goff and Becky and others for pulling that policy together, and the board voted on it and approved it. But it's really for the purpose of economic development, really driving economic development in our downtown, whether it's through buying smaller parcels and trying to consolidate them, as Brian mentioned, or, you know, a JV partnership type of situation, perhaps it's with a parking garage or something like that, or in this case, we've talked about the plaza and its ability to generate some activity in the downtown as well. So those are the types of things, you know, that we wanted to keep that economic focus on the use of those funds.
Just on that note, I'm counting, Mike, how many times you're going to refer to the plaza. So I support it. I'd like to know what the next steps are at some point about it, know that there was going to be some outreach of the business owners, et cetera, so.
That's number nine, so we got a few.
Number nine, and I've bet it, I've got an internal bet with myself that Mike's going to mention it in all of the, in all the 10 items.
All right, well, let's see. Why don't we go into the second one?
I do recall seeing the land banking policy. Did the city adopt one as well? Or is it the EDA one that we saw?
The EDA adopted it, and I think that it did come to the council for a work session so you could see it, is my recollection, but we will make sure that that circulated again because it's certainly been over a year since the council has looked at it. But it lays out the criteria and the decision-making process.
Now, under the charter, is the city allowed to own parcels for economic development?
Yes.
Can we just make, I have a sort of a loose memory that I think something we looked at, we may have actually voted on a policy, that the two policies, whatever they are, they're unified?
Yeah, I don't think the city has adopted a policy, but the EDA did adopt that policy right at the time that the Podonaic property is being sold, and so the EDA wanted to position itself to be a responsible steward for those funds that were being directed towards it, and I think that was the genesis of that policy.
I guess the question is, if the city hasn't adopted one, then perhaps we need to think about whether we do that, just so it's in line with what the EDC is trying to do, too.
Yeah, and what I would recommend just as a general policy is that when the city is interested in doing that, to partner with the EDA and have the EDA serve as the City Council's agent for conducting those types of transactions. But that's probably another discussion for another day, but I think that's a pretty good, the EDA is positioned to be able to act more efficiently, I think possibly, on these things, just by charter than the City Council is.
Okay. Why don't we go into the second one, then?
Okay, just before I go to the second, I just wanted to mention public plaza.
Mike, you've got to work it in for it to be effective. You've got to work it into the point.
Subliminal. I didn't realize I said that. The second topic, parking, public plaza, will, we included, this was actually quite a lively discussion on parking, and parking is, I will say, you know, with the years spent on EDA, it's a reoccurring theme, something I feel like as a city we really need to keep working at, and it's not just one thing, and so that's, you know, there's a diversity in this discussion. We talked about potentially hiring a consultant, a traffic engineer of sorts, to do a parking study, and that even branched out into, okay, what do we hire this person to do? Is it to help solve some of the towing issues? Is it to look at perhaps introducing metered parking in our retail locations? Is it to advise on a city parking authority, potential for that? We talked about, in general, public parking garage locations, and are there opportunities out there that we could be seizing? Kaiser Permanente is an excellent example, where we've struck a deal with Kaiser Permanente for now, for nights and weekends, parking in their garage, and that parking garage is obviously, you know, is very well-located next to our downtown, and, you know, the idea, perhaps, one of the ideas is how do we structure a longer-term deal? Do we think about investing into that garage? Our planning director, Jim Snyder, had shared some renderings earlier about potentially putting an elevator on the side of that garage and trying to unlock the value of the upper levels of that parking garage, and being able to leverage that for our downtown parking if Kaiser Permanente would ever entertain something like that. All interesting and good ideas to be explored. There was some discussion about the library garage, and then also, you know, what are the right requirements for parking requirements for new developments, which of course is something that's, you know, been in the, it is in the works, I believe, with Susan Bell and others leading the evaluation on that. And then we talked about new technologies, you know, so introducing the, what's the parking app that I park mobile, that I use all the time in downtown DC? You know, so you don't have to actually spend a lot of money on parking meters if you just introduce Park Mobile, right, for quote-unquote metered parking. You use your smartphone to pay for parking, and it helps to create a lot of turnover for limited spaces for the retail, and, you know, could be a benefit to the businesses. So there are a lot of topics within, a lot of subtopics within that topic of parking, and so I'll stop there and see if anyone else wants to jump in on that or questions.
Any questions?
Why, is that something that the EDA could work with the planning department on? Or, I know the planning department is looking at parking as well. I hate to have the EDA looking at parking here and planning looking at parking here and not communicating with each other.
Yeah, I think that planning is working with the EDA on this right now, and so this is something that is moving forward. We also are doing a parking study for the library. That's underway right now as well. Kaiser, you know, we've been, I think, effective in working with Kaiser, the mayor and the vice mayor. Rick Goff, myself, and Jim Snyder met with Kaiser earlier this year. They agreed to extend the hours of public parking on weeknights, and so they've sort of incrementally been moving in the right direction, and I think that's the approach we've tried to take with them, to try to keep moving them along and open that garage up more and more, and then eventually with the goal of a long-term arrangement that people can really count on.
Okay, other questions come? Vice Mayor Snyder?
I'd like to just support the work and appreciate that the EDA is focused on that. I think that you couldn't ask for a much better location than that parking garage, and the idea of a truly win-win with that parking garage is very exciting, so please keep up the good work there.
Okay. Ms. Oliver?
And I guess I look at number two on parking and I look at number six on communication between boards, and I hope that as a part of this effort, you will work with the Citizens' Action Committee on Transportation, who, you know, frequently weighs in on parking matters, and it, the place in which you may be able to add the most value on this is translating what these things mean to economic development. The CACT might be more focused on what this means for, you know, citizens and pedestrian safety and the like, but, you know, what are the impacts on economic development of these aspects of it?
And I agree with you completely, and thank you, by the way, for the suggestion to coordinate with CACT. I've actually gone to a couple of recent meetings, and they're a very good group, and I hope we can coordinate with that group in particular. I would go even a step farther and mention, remind the council, we have some flexibility as EDA to go out and hire consultants, and so beyond just, you know, economic analysis, we can actually go out and, you know, engage consultants and formulate plans. For example, going out and getting a transportation consultant to really dig into these things. I think that's, you know, we've done that in the past with other items, and I think it's worked out pretty well, whether it's the small area plans or the branding that we did many years ago, and so that's an opportunity. of that garage and trying to unlock the value of the upper levels of that parking garage, and being able to leverage that for our downtown parking. If Kaiser Permanente would ever entertain something like that. All interesting and good ideas to be explored. There was some discussion about the library garage. And then also, you know, what are the right requirements for parking requirements for new developments, which of course is something that's, you know, been in the, it is in the works, I believe, with Susan Bell and others leading the evaluation on that. And then we talked about new technologies, you know, so introducing the, what's the parking app that I Park Mobile, that I use all the time in downtown DC. You know, so you don't have to actually spend a lot of money on parking meters if you just introduce Park Mobile, right, for quote-unquote metered parking. You use your smartphone to pay for parking, and it helps to create a lot of turnover for limited spaces for the retail, and, you know, could be a benefit to the businesses. So, there are a lot of topics within, a lot of subtopics within that topic of parking. And so I'll stop there, see if anyone else wants to jump in on that, or questions.
Any questions?
Why, is that something that the EDA could work with the planning department on? Or, I know the planning department is looking at parking as well. I hate to have the EDA looking at parking here, and planning looking at parking here, and not communicating with each other.
Yeah, I think that planning is working with the EDA on this right now. And so, this is something that is moving forward. We also are doing a parking study for the library. That's underway right now as well. Kaiser, you know, we've been, I think, effective in working with Kaiser, the mayor and the vice mayor. Rick Goff, myself, and Jim Snyder met with Kaiser earlier this year. They agreed to extend the hours of public parking on weeknights. And so they've sort of incrementally been moving in the right direction, and I think that's the approach we've tried to take with them, to try to keep moving them along and open that garage up more and more, and then eventually with the goal of a long-term arrangement that people can really count on.
Okay, other questions? Vice Mayor Snyder?
I'd like to just support the work and appreciate that the EDA is focused on that. I think that you couldn't ask for a much better location than that parking garage. And the idea of a truly win-win with that parking garage is very exciting. So please keep up the good work there.
Okay. Ms. Oliver?
And I guess I, I look at number two on parking, and I look at number six on communication between boards. And I hope that, as a part of this effort, you will work with the Citizens' Action Committee on Transportation, who, you know, frequently weighs in on parking matters. And it, the place in which you may be able to add the most value on this is translating what these things mean to economic development. The CACT might be more focused on what this means for, you know, citizens and pedestrian safety and the like, but, you know, what are the impacts on economic development of these aspects of it?
And I agree with you completely. And thank you, by the way, for the suggestion to coordinate with CACT. I've actually gone to a couple of recent meetings, and they're a very good group. And I hope we can coordinate with that group in particular. I would go even a step farther and mention, remind the council, we have some flexibility as EDA to go out and hire consultants. And so beyond just, you know, economic analysis, we can actually go out and, you know, engage consultants and formulate plans. For example, going out and getting a transportation consultant to really dig into these things. I think that's, you know, we've done that in the past with other items, and I think it's worked out pretty well, whether it's the small-area plans or the branding that we did many years ago. And so that's, that's an opportunity that we could take on, whereas I think other boards and commissions might be more limited.
Okay. Why don't we go into the next item, then?
So, this next item, marketing, again, a bit of a recurring theme, because I don't think you can ever do enough marketing to try to bring new businesses and new people into the city that would benefit the commercial corridors and our tax base. You know, in my mind, it was sparked mostly just by being in the Viget Labs office and seeing what a cool place they've created, and how do we get the message out to others that this is the kind of space that's in Falls Church, and, you know, you could come into the city and create this kind of space as well. And if you get some more people like Brian and Andy in Viget Labs into the city, I think we'd be a much better place. So, we talked a lot about hiring a photographer potentially for, you know, Viget Labs and other cool office spaces that we have in the city, maybe the Hilton Garden Inn, other new, you know, new developments or renovated buildings. We talked about creating marketing brochures and other materials. There's a great suggestion about the hand-drawn maps of the city that's used in other jurisdictions that could be a great draw for potential, you know, people coming through the city, tourists, or, you know, would-be, you know, businesses that would have interest in, you know, the small, the smallness, the good, you know, small-town feel of Falls Church. And we talked about videos, shopping, promoting shopping locally, upgrading a website. These are some ideas that came from our economic staff, and I think they're all very good ones. So, there's a lot to be done here. But, you know, I think it's all, it's all important to try to get the word out to try to bring new businesses into the city.
There's another, there's, there's another aspect of the marketing.
Another aspect of the marketing, and that's that, in the process of reaching out, both within the community and beyond the community, we are, we are codifying more a vision of what Falls Church City is, the opportunities here, both for retail and commercial work. And it's a way to have the citizens, you know, take a more active interest in these things. So.
Thank you. Mr. Shields says, is there any coordination between the EDA and the new hire and marketing, you know, for the city? Ingrid is receiving?
Yeah, absolutely.
So you guys have been working with her?
Ingrid is, is great, and she's doing a great job.
Ingrid is very talented and is doing a great job just bringing a young perspective to the marketing, the marketing picture.
Okay.
And one thing I'll just note, when Ingrid came and presented the plan, or what her findings were to the council back in the spring, one of the key things that would be the corner of all the marketing is having a website that really reflects well on the city, is the kind of website that you want to promote the city, to have that be the go-to place. So all your flyers, all your brochures are sort of coming back to that website. The website is done, it is now with Civic Plus, and they're about to go live with that soon. So that's a big step forward in that effort. And then I think the marketing really then has that foundation.
That'd be great. It'd be nice to get a preview, frankly, that here on council. I'm sorry, what were you gonna say, Ms. Conley?
I just had one thought about shopping local, and that is one of the things that we hear as we are talking about economic development, is the importance of supporting our existing small businesses. And if there's a way for the EDA to get involved in that, to do some kind of, just working with the local existing businesses, not only the ones that we're trying to draw in, but the ones that are already here.
To follow up on both of those, when we had discussions about the Plaza with both the city manager and the city council, it was a challenge to get local businesses involved. And I think that's, that's something that we all need, I don't know, new ideas and more energy to try to find out how we can better connect with all these businesses that are already in the city, that have never been to a city council meeting, don't know what the EDA does, aren't involved in other local civic associations or the Chamber of Commerce. And we, you know, it seems to me that we have a business community here, but it's very invisible to a large extent. There are many, many businesses, despite my presence and walking around the city all the time, there are many, many businesses that I've never once seen the owner, you know, I have no idea what they do, have never interacted with them. Now, we can't force them to do that, but I would love to create more opportunities to try to build on that.
Brian, I don't know if you wanted to jump in on this topic as well. I'm gonna try to do a better job here of deferring to those dedicated to teaching these topics.
I'll just add a quick note on top of what Eric mentioned. Several members of the city council have been very supportive of our move into new office space, attending ribbon cuttings, those sort of things. I will say, as a business owner, that kind of stuff goes a long way to building a bridge between the city council, the city government, and the local business owners. So, so thank you to those who are doing that. I think that's one of the, one of the things I've met, now that our logo is up on the building, I've met a couple of other local businesses that have reached out from that. And they point out that they don't know much about the city or how everything works. And so I think if we had more, more of that kind of outreach, that would, that would go a long way. So, I think Ingrid is doing a great job kind of building on a lot of the work that we've done over the years, of the story of the little city, and what makes Falls Church City a great place to, to move and maintain a business. So, I think those are the main things we're gonna be working, just kind of continuing that momentum.
Ready for the next one? Yeah, next, next. Or, do you have something, Mr. Duncan?
Well, I was just looking at your 10 points, and I'm thinking maybe this is the place to ask this, so sorry if I'm prolonging this item. But I don't remember at your retreat, and tonight, we haven't talked about it either, your concept of affordable retail, your concept of affordable retail, which I've heard you talk about. And just wondering if we could hear a little bit of your thinking about the current state of play on that. I mean, you know, as we do redevelopment, particularly consolidate parcels and do large-scale redevelopment, obviously, the people who are most disadvantaged are longtime, usually small businesses who are paying rents that are, you know, below what the market is gonna command if we did a redevelopment. So, as we look to how we allocate our resources, public plaza, or in other directions, you know, that is something I think the community is keenly interested in, because they would actually like to see these small, and sometimes, just to be honest, struggling businesses helped out, particularly as times here change. And I'm, I've always been personally a little reluctant, because I don't wanna be the person on city council who picks, you know, your restaurant instead of yours, because, for obvious reasons, or your, you know, gift shop over your salon. So, if we were gonna do that, I mean, for affordable housing, we've got a regime, you know, right? There's federal standards, and it's a very mathematical kind of thing. But for affordable retail, we're sort of out there on our own. Do you have any thoughts about allocating any of your resources to, you know, helping existing businesses weather storms when redevelopment occurs?
Thank you for the question. So, in my mind, and I'm gonna speak for myself, not for the full board, I think there's difference, difference of opinions on the board. But for myself, the idea of affordable retail or affordable space, you can call it a lot of different things, you know, the genesis for me is just, you know, years of conversations with folks that, you know, in some ways may wanna see some redevelopment in the corridor, but in other ways don't want it to turn into Tyson's Corner, Arlington, you know, the types of places where mom-and-pop retailers are kind of cool, you know, local retailers are run out. And I understand that, and empathize with that. And, you know, regionally, we combat affordable housing by, you know, having a pretty elegant system in place to, you know, for new developments that come in, you know, there's always that very critical, important discussion about affordable housing. In fact, it's usually the biggest proffer by far that new developments commit to. And so for me, you know, I, one approach, I think, is to potentially allow applicants to also thinking about, or think about, you know, within that affordable umbrella, providing some affordable first-floor space for local retailers. Now, the way it would need to work is, when a project comes in, and they are to be, you know, they're gonna redevelop that site, it's not really being able to save those retailers that are there currently. It can't work like that, because a project can take three years to build. So, that business has to go somewhere. But if you start to put a system in place that allows new projects to devote some resources towards the local retail that the city may want to keep or attract, then, let's just say, you know, the next project that comes through and is approved, if there's some provision there, then the next project that happens, if there's a local retailer that the city, you know, does in fact, you know, think it's important to try to keep, maybe there's an opportunity to move that local retailer over into the new development that will have been built by then. Or alternatively, it could give the city a new marketing tool to go out to some local retailers that are in the area, whether it's DC, Arlington, Fairfax, what have you, and say, hey, you have a great, cool business, you're not a big chain, we think you fit the mold of Falls Church, we think you'd be very successful. And here, you know, let's try to recruit you into the city and go into this new development and add to that local feel of the city. And so, you know, there are a lot of different ways you could, you could approach this. But the idea is, as we develop our commercial corridors, that we don't forget about the local feel that we have currently in Falls Church, and we don't lose it when we redevelop every, you know, with each new site that goes through the process. And we're able to keep that feel to the city, even though we're, we are redeveloping some of the assets. Because let's face it, we have to do some redevelopment in the commercial corridors, for the strength of our tax base, to be able to pay for the schools, the parks, everything else that, you know, people enjoy in Falls Church. But, but you don't have to give everywhere, give everything away and lose that local feel. So that, that's where I come from, you know, on that particular concept, that's where my thinking is. There are probably different ways you could do it. You know, you could set up a system of priorities of, you know, hey, you know, food restaurants are a high priority. You know, what's the next priority? You could come up with a list of 10 things that are priorities. And then you could have people, you know, just like affordable housing, you could have people that apply to be part of the program, and then ultimately, you know, someone selected when space is available.
That's a very thoughtful answer. Thank you. The only question I would ask beyond that is perhaps staff could, we can't be the only jurisdiction in the world that is confronting this problem. And perhaps there are other communities like us elsewhere, Boulder, Colorado, for instance, or others, which are undergoing some transformation and are trying to deal with this somehow. And maybe there's things that they do, or techniques, devices, that we could apply here, just to give people that assurance that, you know, we are, we are about large and small business. Thanks.
Okay, let's keep on going, then.
So, the next topic is metro shuttle. And we talked, we had a pretty lively discussion about, you know, both new shuttles that have recently come online with Hilton Garden Inn, for example, and other shuttles in Oakwood, and other shuttles that will ultimately come online. I'm gonna go ahead and defer to Barry and Bob, and see if y'all wanna jump in on this particular topic.
Thank you. Barry's been working pretty hard on this. I've gathered some outside data with respect to costs and things like that. The, the EDA has not come to grips with any details at this point. My own feeling is that it's important that this shuttle be simple, that it be privately run, and not try to be a city appendage of one kind or another. But those are my own feelings. Barry may feel differently. The idea here, what germinated in the group is the notion that we have a number of shuttles operating today that most of us don't even know about. Pretty much everyone knows the Garden Inn is shuttling people back and forth, and that's been very important in their somewhat stellar economic performance. That's the number-one reason people stay, travelers stay at that hotel. We know Oakwood has 10 shuttles a day. We understand that Rushmark and Lincoln will be running shuttles from their places. There are others on the list here. The notion is, is there not some way to coordinate these so that we don't have 20 or 30 shuttles running at the same time, in the same place? Doesn't seem to make sense. One of the key things is, how do we allow the general public, who would like to get to a metro station, to go to work or whatever, how do we get them to ride free? All the research we've done is, it basically has to be free. That could eventually involve proffers or conditions on new developments. It could involve some city money at some point. But I think the EDA is pretty determined to try to come up with a plan or alternate plans to put before the various boards and commissions and council, to see if we can't get something. I think it's, I think collectively, we feel it's something that could really help economic development in the city. Barry?
To start, there was, there are a couple of alternatives that are close to us that we should consider. Number one is the art system. I've talked to Mr. Yaffey about that, and they are in the middle of modifying their transportation management plan. So, there's an opportunity for us to work into that. There's another organization called The Sling in McLean that has started. And for $7, you tell them where you'll be, and they'll come by and pick you up and take you to the metro for a $7 fee. Now, when you consider the fact that it costs $5 to park at metro, and a couple of dollars in gas otherwise to get to metro, it seems like a pretty good deal. Of course, they're further away from the metro than we are, so there's negotiation that would have to be considered into doing that. I understand we've hired a new transportation employee planner. I'm not sure what his responsibilities will be, but this is an opportunity for us to work with staff, to try to make this happen, to try to do a little of the legwork for them. But ultimately, it comes down to agreements between the city and the organization that we deal with. So, Bob and I can do a lot of the grunt work to get this thing started, and hopefully, hopefully the city will latch on to it and make it happen. I read today that the new Hilton Express, where ends of Virginia is, they wanna revamp their whole operation and also have a shuttle. So, if Mason Row goes, there's another shuttle. I mean, we were talking potentially a lot of shuttles. In my own particular mind and experience, metro is not gonna help us. Metro is just not gonna help us. We pay a lot of money into it, but unfortunately, it's never on time. People don't like to use it, because it is never on time. So we need something more that's concentrated in the city, that can, that will be beneficial and help citizens get where they need to go in the city. So, we are working it, and I think it's an excellent opportunity. And I'm hopeful that the city will latch on to the concept again in the future. And this time, we can do it in a very cost-effective manner. Thank you.
Thanks very much. I tell you, one thing I would say is that if you guys start to put this thing together, let us know, because that's a developer request you might do as a proffer or a voluntary concession. And so, I think it's a classic one, it's part of a traffic demand management plan to fund a shuttle, but we need to know, you know, what are the right pieces we wanna be asking for. So, keep us in the loop on what you guys are thinking. Why don't you go into the next item, Mike? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Oliver?
I just wanna draw your attention back to your item number six and the CACT. For item number four, I wanna just remind you that the CACT probably is another border commission that might have an interest in this.
Okay. Why don't we go on to the next item?
So, the next one was the approval process in general, and advocating for So the next one was the approval process in general in advocating for projects if we feel so inclined. You know, we did, we did talk about if, if EDA supports a project, we would try to designate someone to come to, to city council and potentially boards and commissions, you know, for that. We'll maybe put that to the test here shortly with Mason Row. We're supposed to have a special meeting October 27th to actually come up with some resolution on it. And let me turn to John and Ed, and we do have all board members on here too listed. But do you guys, do you guys want to jump in on this?
John, why don't you start? Well, excuse me. We feel that, that the EDA should take a more, a more direct role in, in advocacy for projects that we think are going to not only add to the city, the city's appeal, but also affect the revenue generation from commercial entities. So we, you know, we're, we're committed to helping the council, advising the council on, on these projects. We are in touch with a lot of citizens that are, they submit their, their comments about these projects, and we certainly take those into consideration. And it's, we, we want to be a resource to the council in terms of advocating for projects that we think are, are going to make a difference in the city.
Anything to add, Ed? Okay. Why don't you go to the next item then, Mike?
So we did designate a liaison for planning commission. We, we gave it a shot attempting to designate a liaison to city council, but I think we resolved to, that city council meets too much. We're going to try to come up with something, whether it's shared responsibilities or what have you. We, and we would like to expand it to other boards and commissions. So it's always a tough thing, you know, with the, with the many hours that everyone puts in already, so. But we do, we do think it's very, very important, and we're going to try to work harder on that with communicating across all boards and commissions, not just with what we're working on, but with every, with what everybody else is working on. Number seven, I'll just pause real quick, was there, are there any questions or, okay?
I do want, just real quick comment on that. One of the things I've noticed, being on EDA for a few years, there seem, it seems like there's a lot of just hard data that we try to, that we analyze and talk about and get from, from city staff and try to ask good questions, and that it's not always intuitively obvious to my neighbors and people I talk to in, in the community. And it, it tends to cross over all the other things that we're working on, tree commissions and traffic planning and all these other things. So that's one of the reasons I'm so passionate, passionate about this board, is that I think it's, it's, has the potential to be really influential and very important. And I want to make sure that we are doing our best work in terms of informing city council members, especially new city council members that come on, understanding the fundamentals of, just sort of the basics of the way the local economy works in Falls Church City, and, you know, mixed-use projects, for example. What is the true economic impact of these? I feel like sometimes those issues get politicized, but there's, underneath all of that, there are some hard data that we can point to. And so I think part of the commitment there was that we would do a better job of trying to, trying to communicate that to, to all the boards, but especially city council.
Yeah. So here's a question. I was around when we created the EDA, and one of the things that we were trying to do was to improve the city's outreach to bring new businesses into the city. Where does this fit into the, and what are the metrics that you all think we ought to use for your work in bringing new businesses into the city? When you look at the Fairfax County EDA, for example, they say, we've brought in this number of jobs, we've rented this number of, of X-square footage, and I know that was one of the intentions for the EDA. So how do we, A, I know that you're doing it, but to what extent are you doing it, and how, what metrics is it reasonable to use? Because after 15 years, there's still loads of kinds of retail that you can get right down the road. We still can't get in the city of Falls Church after 15 years of trying. So done pretty good on restaurants, done pretty good on grocery stores lately, got a lot of yogurt shops, you know, whatever, but we don't have a lot of kind of retail. You still can't buy a shirt in the city of Falls Church after 15 years. So how do we, how do we maximize your bringing in new businesses, particularly retail, of the types that we don't have? And how do we measure that?
Looking around for volunteers. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and field that.
I don't particularly need an answer tonight. I just want to put that on the table and ask for your help to figure out how we, how we can, like, use your incredible expertise perhaps more effectively than we have in the past.
So, no, I, I'm half joking. It's a great question and comment, and I think that's something that we'll, we'll want to take back and talk with, with staff about. I would mention, you know, we did have similar conversation with Ingrid in her presentation about some of the marketing things that she was trying to do, and, and how, how would we measure it? You know, what are the right metrics in addition to, you know, website hits? I mean, what other metrics, not, not just online, but on the ground, you know, can we get to? And so I think that's a, that's a good conversation, something that we need to continue to evolve. You know, just as far as attracting new businesses into the city, I think that's, I would go back to the marketing bullet, and for the most part, and, and, you know, I think the emphasis of how important that is, is really in your question, in your comment. You know, how do we try to attract new businesses in the city? I think that's a big part of it. You know, Becky does do a, a very good update report on the business community that she releases every month, and I know we, it's online and it's distributed among the EDA and I think others, but hopefully that's a wide enough distribution to have an impact, because it's also very telling. It's not as concrete in terms of the metrics that I think you're suggesting, but I think it's helpful for sure to understand all the activity.
Just, just to add to that, I think that our relationship with the Chamber of Commerce is another important piece of the, the marketing plan that we would like to see. But at the end of the day, it really, it really is a function of the, of the image that, that we want to project, that the city wants to project. And that's been a mixed signal. There's, there's a significant number of citizens that don't want development. They just don't want it. So, you know, that message gets mixed with the messages that we're trying to pursue, which is, we need, we need economic development in the city. So that's, that's a job for all of us, I believe, because each of us have a role to influence how others think about the city. And, but the marketing piece is, is a very important part of that, and I think we're still grappling with how to measure the, the effects of a, a good marketing campaign. But it's a good question.
So I think one of the limitations we have is inventory. We don't have the retail space to bring a lot of new types of businesses in. Whenever we do have a, a new development in town, I think it brings retail with it in most instances, and it, it behooves us to, to try to create the retail space that brings the shirt stores in and the shoe stores and the types of stores that we don't have. We do have a proliferation of nail salons, and we used to be automotive parts, as you know, Dave, so we are making some progress in that area. But I think inventory is the major limitations for us to get the right type of retail constructed in the city.
So I think the, I think the short answer is public plaza. Do you want to, want to go to the next one? Are you keeping, are you keeping track?
Mr. Brook noted to me as well, Dave, that apparently you can get shirts at BJ's, so I think that problem has been.
And pants, too.
All right, why don't you go on to the next, why don't you go to the next item?
So the next one was, was bikable and walkable is the two big, you know, topics for, you know, how do we, how do we make our downtown better? And bike share is, I should probably be saying that as much as public plaza, because bike share I just think is critically important to, to not only help, you know, enliven the downtown a little bit, I don't know, maybe enliven's not the right word. It's, it's, what I think is critical for, is for the new development coming online. I don't think a lot of the existing residents will just suddenly jump on these bikes and start running work. Some will, but, you know, it's probably not the biggest target market. But if we're trying to bring in, you know, younger professionals, we're trying to bring in new businesses that want their employees to really want to live in this community, work in this community, we need to provide an option like bike share. It's highly successful in our surrounding communities. And, you know, we talked a lot about with Mason Row, I'll just take a moment here, you know, we didn't make, pass any resolution on Mason Row yet, but a lot of the discussion, or there was a lot of consent around the, the table on, you know, they really, it would really be a great thing if they had a stronger commitment with bike share. You know, you have to start it somewhere, you have to get the commitment going somewhere. It's right on the bike trail, right between the two metro stops. We've heard from staff, Paul Stotter and others, that Arlington is, is willing to step up their game and bring bike share to East Falls Church Metro. We heard at, I think the CACT meeting, I heard that Fairfax also is potentially, you know, at least talking about it for West Falls Church Metro. Anyway, I think it's a really big deal for the city. I think many of my colleagues on EDA agrees, and hopefully we can do things, take steps, necessary steps as a city to push that forward. So I'll just take that little opportunity to get on the soapbox about it. And, and then we also talked about streetscape, and, you know, there's a great suggestion to, you know, help out in streetscape in any way that we can. I think this group stands ready to do that, and, you know, however, however city council would like us to, to jump in and continue to work on, on either of those two topics or others related to bikeability and walkability, we'd love to, love to hear.
Okay.
I just want to echo what Mike said about the bikeability and bike share. I think that we're really right before a tipping point. And if we just give a little push and more emphasis on some bike lanes and actually committing to building bike share stations, that it will start to flourish. Until we do it, we'll never know, but I don't, in, in the grand scheme of things, of course it's an investment, but I think it's a reasonable investment that will pay dividends both in the community and the, the way we live in Falls Church, as well as economic developments, economic benefits. I mean, the WNOD trail is one of the, really one of the greatest assets that we have here in the city of Falls Church, and I, I don't know that anybody's ever measured what the economic impact of it is, but it certainly has the potential to have an even greater economic impact. And I know what they do in Arlington promoting the trail, and what they do in Vienna and beyond promoting the trail, and having festivals right off the trail, and businesses right on the trail, you know, are tremendous, and we have that same opportunity.
Excellent point. Any, any comments? You guys should advocate for it, too. You know, I mean, clearly you guys feel as a group pretty strongly about it, and I would say as projects come through and there's an opportunity to make that point and impress upon the, you know, developers of those projects, you should certainly say your piece.
Yeah, I think this group will continue to do that. We, you know, I think more than a year ago, we had Charlie Danyan from Alta Services. They, they are the operator of the bike share system in the capital region. It was really, really a great meeting. He brought a lot of great statistics about how people use it. You know, it's really a commuter service, and, you know, it's very, it's been very successful. And so anyway, you know, one, one other thought on this, I'll just leave you with. So we have two metro stations with our name on it. People only walk about a half a mile back and forth. Now, some, there are some exceptions, I know. Councilman Snyder, for example, is a good exception. Well, actually, no, I think it's within a half mile, isn't it? It's pretty close. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it's great, it's great exercise, but most people don't walk more than a half mile. And so if you have bike share, that is the, that is the connection, right? Point where you don't have to get in your car, you don't have to wait for a bus or whatever. Anyway, I'll, thank you for the second opportunity.
And the other great news is we've adopted a plan that lays out our, our bike share corridors, and we're actively trying to get, raise the money for it right now and negotiating proffers for it. So this is, this is in motion. We need to get the money for it, but we're, we're working hard on it.
What's the next item?
So the next one is fiscal impact model. I would just say at our November meeting, and Rick, what's the, the date of our November meeting? Because it did switch.
Monday, November 2nd.
Monday, so Monday, November 2nd at, at 7 o'clock in this room. We're going to have our consultant in, is that right? Okay. Just want to make sure they confirm. We're going to have our consultant in that developed the model for EDA and for the city, and we will engage them, and I think probably a very good discussion about what goes into the model, what doesn't go into the model, and are there any permutations that we need to be thinking about? And we're very, we understand the, the current discussion that's, that's been had about this model, and so we want to, we want to make sure we have it right. So we invite everybody to come to public meeting, and hopefully we'll get a lot of folks out for that.
Mr. Snyder?
I wonder if, in looking at this model, if you can begin to capture an aggregation effect? That is, it's when you take certain costs one by one, but at some point, there's a tipping point where you need an additional ladder truck, you need an additional 200 seats in the school. Can we find a way to measure that? That is, as these costs go up, when does it trigger various public expenditures that you're not otherwise accounting for on an individual basis? So if you could somehow kick that idea around, that would be very helpful. I just want to make sure that we're capturing all the effects, not only individual effects, but cumulative effects. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the question. We'll, we'll raise it.
And I'm sure Mr. Snyder would agree that we want to capture the cumulative positive effects, too, because obviously there's revenues generated, spinoffs, synergies, and so forth that, that we do not include in the current model, which is a pretty conservative device. And I don't think we've really tried to measure that. That's something I'd be interested to hear the consultant speak to.
Yeah, I will say in our last EDA meeting, we, we had some discussion without the consultant and confirmed this model does not include any of the business spinoff that, you know, you would, you would otherwise get from new developments. It's strictly a cost and revenue model, the revenue being the actual taxes and other business licenses, you know, revenues that it generates. So it intentionally does not capture some of that business spinoff. I think in some ways, probably like intentionally doesn't capture some of the, you know, the tipping point costs, but, but those are both areas to explore. We're going to explore that in the next meeting. I, I'm sorry, Bob, I didn't call on you before, but Bob is also on the fiscal impact model subcommittee, so.
Yeah, I just want to respond for a moment. Obviously, this is a topic I've been interested in personally for a long time, and obviously many, many people in the city have questions and comments and thoughts on the model. In the main, I think it's a very good one, but it doesn't do everything. Part of our job, I think collectively, is to be sure that, that we understand and we try to have others understand what it can do and what it can't do. As an example, tipping points, perhaps the most important, or one of the most important of those are school seats. When do we need another classroom? When do we need another school? And the problem there is, when it comes to school seats, we have to face the fact that the model doesn't attempt to measure all the single-family houses being built. How do we build into the model? If you're going to have a tipping point, and it has to do with students, you have to recognize that a large majority of students are coming from something that so far, the city hasn't been able to control, which is redevelopment of single-family houses, which produce over two students per house in most cases. Many, many of them, three, as we all know. So it's a complex issue. That doesn't mean we shouldn't tackle it, and we will in November, be talking with one of the best consultants in the country and seeing how we can go about doing that in the most accurate and public way and transparent way possible.
Mr. Brook?
So I want to try to keep some of it simple. I, I understand that, you know, I share Vice Mayor Snyder's view that we should try to capture the tipping points. I think that's going to be important to do, but fundamental to that, which we should be able to do, which has been one, one of my biggest criticisms of the model, and I'll say it again, because again, I do believe in. again, because again, I do believe in some level of repetition, is the model was, at the time that it was designed, there was capacity. So it was supposed to capture operating expenses and net that out, et cetera, which I think the model does exceedingly well for that purpose. But it does not capture capital costs, is my understanding of it. So we're turning around now to developers and say, as part of our standard proffer packets, you must contribute some level to, say, transportation items, say Bike Share, which shows that there's now new demand. You are to, you know, contribute to capital schools, which we've always known. You are to contribute to library, parks, and the list goes on. So to me, that shows clearly if we're demanding it and boards and commissions were saying, we need to start addressing these issues, there's a capacity issue that the model is not capturing. So to say that the models are paying for themselves is questionable at best, because you're not capturing the capital. And Bob, to your point, there is nothing we can do, you're absolutely right about the single family homes. Nothing. And we have to just acknowledge that. That is going to be what it is.
I don't agree.
Well, I mean, there may be things that we can do as far as, you know, zoning codes, you know, sort of the McMansion problems and issues like that. But I think those are limited. I think it's a separate question of what we're doing with commercial property and building residential on top of it. I just fundamentally think that they're two different things. So, you know, but going back to the model, and I don't necessarily want to get into that debate about what it does and doesn't do in the single family versus, you know, conversion of residential or commercial properties into residential, I think that's, that's best handled differently. But I think that when we're looking at the model, we need to start figuring out the capital costs, which we haven't done. So I hope that that's, that's something that the model will eventually be able to do. And there's two ways of looking at it. One is sort of, what are the pure capital costs? You know, can we build metrics for, you know, per X person? You know, we should have X amount of open space, the usage on the libraries, issues of public facilities and other infrastructure. And then if we can tackle the second piece of that, which is the tipping issue.
Okay, why don't we just?
Not yet. Actually, well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would actually like to hear the consultant speak to the issue of single family homes when, when you talk with him, because, you know, there are things that we have done. I mean, we, we voted to ban split lot development. Some of us were ambivalent about that, but we understood that, you know, there were reasons that the community felt very strongly about that. And so in the end, we banned split lot development. So that's one step that we took to restrict the number of single family homes, period. I would be curious, I've heard other people ask, you know, is there some way that we can levy an impact fee on major single family home redevelopments, new constructions? Are there things that we can do that hit at what is the real core problem, problem, situation, which is single family homes throw off high public service costs and they do not pay their own way directly? Now, the model might also show that a single family home that has three children and two SUVs and everything that comes with a single family home has tremendous spinoff impacts, beneficial spinoff impacts. And I'd like to know that too.
Okay. So why don't we, how about this, just as a way to resolve and maybe leave this issue, after you have your consultant come in, why don't you come see us or have someone come see us or just convey the results of that discussion? Let us join in if we can in some small way with what you're going to do to proceed with this issue, which is I think a great public interest overall. So maybe we can just plan to do that after you've had your time with your consultant. Okay.
I think that sounds good.
Okay.
If, if there's specific questions you want us to ask him, like how to, how to factor in the, the capital costs, which I think is really hard, because you've got a marginal versus average cost issue here and might be done exogenous to the model, might be the best way to do that, is probably what he's going to say. But it'd be good if you just send questions to us that you'd like, like us to, to cover in that meeting.
Okay, that sounds good. All right, why don't we go into the next item? We do have a lot of our agenda after you guys leave, so we got, we got a pretty full agenda still to go.
Number nine is, is my favorite topic. Public Plaza.
We haven't heard about that yet. Tell us more.
You've heard from me enough on it. I'm going to turn to Brian actually on this one. And Brian, if you want, do you want to jump in and talk about this, the public plaza a little bit? Can I, can I invite you in on that one?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, this is something that, that we looked at, at our retreat last year, so not the one most recently. And is sort of brainstorming about what we can do in terms of public spaces that will attract, attract businesses, whether it's commercial clients like ours or, or additional dining and entertainment options. And it fits perfectly with a small area plan that was put together for the, for that, that spot. And so to Mike's credit, he, he really brainstormed ways that we could explore this a little bit more, specifically worked with other boards and commissions, worked with the planning department as best we could, and then put together a proposal for an outside firm to come in and do some design explorations, which I think you, you all have seen. There is tremendous support from at least one local business right down there and I'm sure many others. So, you know, I think this is something that, that we are committed to as a, as a board and willing to put up some of the funds that, that we're responsible for, not just because we think it's, it's a good idea and a place that everyone, that, that lives and works here now will benefit from, but we, we think it's a good investment of funds in, in the sense that over the next five, 10 years, we'll see additional revenues coming from, from businesses and people coming here based on that plaza. So that's my summary.
So can I just, Mr. Mayor, can I just take a second and ask Brian to take his, his EDA hat off for a moment? Okay, so, you know, Brian is, I think the perfect person to speak to this, all right? He is a business owner that has invested in our downtown by way of his office. He has 35 employees. He chose to bring his business to Falls Church. It wasn't his first office, he chose to bring it here. He's right in that downtown area on that 100 block. And so as a business owner, what does this mean to you? What does this mean to your employees? And, you know, how does it affect you? Because, you know, you're, let's face it, you're speaking on behalf of a lot of business owners downtown that maybe have some, you know, some marginal amenities.
I personally think that this, that the Falls Church downtown area represents what a lot of your modern, smaller businesses are looking for. They're not looking for, you know, office parks, they're not looking for the insanity of Tysons or Arlington. Downtown areas that have walkable restaurants, dining options, entertainment options that are, you know, a shuttle to the metro, that sort of thing, and outdoors, outdoor spaces. A lot of our staff will take walking breaks around the block. You know, a lot of my staff is 35 and younger and it's, it's a piece of the puzzle. I mean, bike services, all the things that we're talking about, there's, there are trends and this isn't just my business. I mean, there are trends in lots of businesses in my peers, not just in the DC area, but all around the country that I, that I keep up with. And places, public places for this sort of thing are, I think, an important factor of it. And you can look even locally, look at the, the public area at Mosaic, which isn't, isn't huge, includes a water feature and stuff like that, some things that we've talked about for this public plaza. I think it's, I think it's relevant. We're hosting an event on Thursday for the local DC tech community. We have over 100 people that are planning to come out to Falls Church City. I would love for there to be more of a downtown experience. I think that, you know, some of these are entrepreneurs and other tech people. And if we had more spaces like this and corresponding office space for them to move into, I think you'd see more activity. So, yeah, I, I think this is the kind of thing that is, represents a classic investment of funds that will, that will pay back over time.
So, thank you. And not rehearsed, I totally put Brian on the spot, but if you want to hear from local business owners and people that you want to invest in your downtown, it's people like Brian and it's other business owners that we want to attract to our downtown. I don't think there is anything wrong with the city investing its own money to create this kind of amenity in its downtown, to improve it and to attract more businesses like Brian's. And so the EDA has already committed to funding half of the cost of this plaza. I strongly, strongly encourage City Council to do the same and let's get this thing built.
Sounds good. All right. And what's the next item that you'd like to discuss?
Well, the next one, is the last one and I'll turn to Ryan once again to talk about special projects team.
Sure. So again, I think this was a topic I was passionate about when it came up, a survey going around, how to use some of the water proceed funds, not for the plaza necessarily, but things like fixing up the sidewalks and just making that downtown area more pleasant to be around. And again, I mean, just sort of reiterating what, what I was saying previously, a lot of the, the types of businesses I think we're going to be attracting with younger people are going to walk around in that downtown area and it's currently, you know, not up to logical standards. I mean, it's hard, it was hard for me as a business person to invest hundreds of thousands of dollars in a build out in, in a, in a building that looks over an area that is clearly not well maintained. And so it's hard for me then to recruit my peers in the business world to come, move their businesses to Falls Church when our primary intersection is not well maintained and, and appears to be neglected or, you know, undervalued by, by the city leadership. So my understanding that was that there was a commitment to make some of those improvements. I would love to see those go through and I'm happy to, with my peers in the EDA, discuss other, other ways that we could improve that, that area consistent with the, the small area plan that's put, put in place.
Mr. Shields, do you have any updates on what's going to be happening down there and when?
Well, the, some of the, the smaller things, painting the crosswalks, those are all going to be done this fall. The lights are being painted right now. The LED lights will go in this fall and that will brighten up the downtown area. The heavier work on the brick, you know, the, sort of the most expensive part of the, of the investment is to extend the streetscape up to the state theater. And that is, and engineering right now, and that will be, we anticipate would be done in the spring or summer. And so that's probably the most visible thing and, and we've got a couple of months on that piece of it.
Mr. Collins, are there any other details that you would add?
We upgraded the, excuse me, maintained the sidewalks in the 100, 200 block of Broad and relayed the brick. We'll be installing water spigots over the winter probably. We'll be looking to upgrade the landscape in where we can, although we're limited by the amount of shade that the trees give off actually and the amount of root mass that's there. We can't really put perennial flowering plants there, not able to survive in that environment. Oh yeah, electrical outlets on the streetlights. And as, as Mr. Shields said, the real, the very substantial improvements up and down Broad Street, or excuse me, up and down Washington, North Washington Street will be coming in the spring and summer where we upgrade all of those sidewalks, upgrade the lamping there, install curb nubs at Park Place and Park Avenue.
Okay, what else do you have, Mike?
Those are all the items we had from our, our retreat that rose to the surface as action items. I want to look to my colleagues here to see if there's any, anything else that you all want to jump in with or anything that we may have missed.
So going back to your favorite public plaza topic, there was talk earlier of mid-block crossing. Has that fallen off the, the table for discussion or is that just still swirling around?
Hopefully, it's still swirling around. It's, it was really kind of a side discussion, a sidebar from the public plaza. We thought it was interesting in that it would connect to the public plaza on one side of Broad Street and be able to connect both sides of Broad Street where we have, you know, really the, the heart and soul of our, you know, pedestrian area. I also presented this to Planning Commission recently and I thought there was very positive discussion about that mid-block crossing with the Planning Commission. So hopefully, it's something that we can continue to discuss and the city can look into.
Great, thanks for the answer and I encourage you to keep that idea alive.
Do you have some, Vice Mayor Snyder?
Yeah, just if you all could do some thinking about how we improve the city's outreach to like hotel developers, rather than relying on the developers bringing the projects to us, what can we do better to reach out to various elements of the commercial development community? If you have some ideas, that would be great if you could share that with us. And thanks a lot for the collective work. And I, I did want to clarify when I was talking about cumulative impacts, I meant also the ones that Phil was talking about as well. So thanks a lot.
So I tell you, I just want to, behalf of the City Council, thank you all for all the good work, not just for what you've done in this retreat or your action items, but your really creative, action oriented view of the city is very refreshing and I think shared by many of us on council to really just get some things done. And so it's nice to have you guys come in and, and talk about either what you've done or what you want to do. And I hope we can harness that energy to really get some neat stuff done, because I think we're talking about some really pretty cool stuff that we can do here in the city and we got a lot of brain power around this table. So keep up the good work. Thank you, and I hope we'll regroup coming up here very soon. Thanks very much.
Thank, thank you. Thank you for having us in.
Sure. Do we want to take like a two minute break or just keep, okay, we got yes, we have a no, two minute break? All right, we're going to make a two, two and a half minute break then. And then we're going to go very quickly through the rest of our agenda, okay? And then we're going to go very quickly through the rest of our agenda, okay? All right, if we could all sit down in our chairs and get ready for the rest of the meeting, if you're not going to be here, if you can, make your way out the door quietly. If there's anyone outside the room, please come on in, or either one. If you're coming, come on back in. If you're leaving, keep heading out. All right, let's go ahead and, what I'd like to do is, since we have folks from VDOT who have been patiently waiting, and I know they've enjoyed our council meeting, that they've been observing, but if we can move them to the next item, oh, that is, they are the next item, aren't they?
Yes.
Okay, so we're not moving them up at all. Why don't we, again, start that discussion, and we're going to try to run through the rest of this agenda as quick as we can, but why don't we go ahead and have that discussion about the resolution on I-66 multimodal framework agreement? Mr. Shields?
Okay, Mayor Tarter, members of council, I think we'll sort of try to tag-team this, but if I could, at the beginning, just to lay out a couple of things that we think the resolution accomplishes. And Cindy Muster drafted the resolution. There's been discussion today about the content of the resolution, and we've tried to set a tone that we think that reflects some of the council could act on tonight. The, one thing that I think we need to say right off the bat is that there's a lot of motion happening right now. There are important meetings late last week. There's a lot of discussion ongoing right now, and things are in flux. But the regional bodies will start to act. The TPB, Mr. Snyder will be asked to vote on the Transportation Planning Board's action on this on Wednesday. And so I think the desire to have the council provide some direction for that upcoming regional work.
Just on that, can we pause for one second?
Sure.
So on that, exactly what is going to be voted on? Do we know what the motion is going to say?
Mr. Snyder, could you speak to what the TPV's scope is on this? It's larger than just this.
Yeah, I mean, it's approving a whole group of projects, right? So it's pretty brief on this generally, but if there's a desire to get into it more, there is some proposed language that's being circulated that says, whereas the Commonwealth of Virginia will only implement the Transform 66 inside the Beltway project, if the Commonwealth Transportation Board adopts a policy that, one, ensures toll revenues are used to support multimodal improvements that fit the users of the corridor, and, two, that the widening component of such project would only take place after an evaluation of the effectiveness of the tolling and multimodal components and the performance of the facility to be conducted no sooner than two years after conversion to HOV. Conver, three, so HOV three conversion is what, 2020? So, 20? 2021. So the earliest the widening could be considered would be two years after that, so it would be 2023. So my understanding is it's a pretty perfunctory motion, except that it's likely to get a lot of debate, and then there's this language. VDOT, do you agree with that analysis?
Yeah, I agree with that. Yeah, that is the only proposed language that so far has been circulated.
Oh, sorry. That is the only proposed language that's been circulated today, although the vote is still a day and a half away. And I think really what that does is to ensure that we are progressing to the successful implementation of the framework agreement that we've talked about here. That's going to really lay out the motion of the, you know, project selection process and the expenditures of these revenues over the course of a 40-year term. So that is why it was very important to make sure that, on top of the proposed CLRP planning project, that that was an understood component, that this framework agreement would be almost establishing the 40-year, you know, game rolls, if you will, of this revenue.
So the vote, Vice Mayor Snyder, is actually on the agreement? Or at least the framework for the agreement?
Well, the action is on the overall project.
It is.
Right? And so maybe you could explain, let's say we said, okay, we've got a lot of questions about the project, but it's okay to move it forward. Like, what can happen to this project after that vote? What kind of, what is the range of changes that can occur?
I mean, we're still in the project development process. I mean, the ranges of changes could occur through the framework agreement and the comments that we're still collecting from the jurisdictions. I think there's some important negotiations on that language to make sure that everyone, you know, gets what they need from this project and the insurance that the money goes to the right projects and that process is established appropriately. It also means that the project development process can continue for things such as the deeper dive into the traffic operations that we're doing for public comment at the Design Public Hearing. There's still, we're still developing the actual tolling project.
Yeah, so I'm sort of a simple guy when it comes to this. I've heard enough about the project, both from staff and VDOT and others, and then from the public to know sort of what I think about the project, and I've been pretty clear. I've got significant problems with it. I think it boils down to a luxury tax. We've got some comments that were pretty pointed from at least one constituent, I think, sort of hit it on the head. Hopefully, the council members all have had a chance to look at it. I don't think staff was copied, but I forwarded it to the city clerk, the city manager, and assistant city managers, so hopefully you have that. So that's where I'm coming at it. I do not want to be on the record of supporting this thing. But I do understand that this thing is going to go forward with or without us. So I do want to make sure that, that the actual agreement is signed off on, or else Richmond is going to decide how that money gets distributed, which would be a worse outcome altogether. So that's where I'd want to be on this, on this whole thing, at the end of the day, of not being on the record of supporting the actual plan. Other members may feel differently about it. I'd want to either abstain from that or getting into that. But where I land is actually I'd want to oppose or make it clear that there's aspects of this plan that are very troubling, but understanding it's going to go forward. So at least proposing that the Vice Mayor Snyder actually vote in favor of the actual agreement, or else we're going to be cut out of that altogether. So that's where I'd want to be at the end of the day, sort of in the simplest terms. If that makes sense. But there is no way, what I vote on, I just want to be clear, I will not support something that says this plan is good. I can, some of the goals I get, and I think this says that in the whereas, 47 through 51, but I don't want to be on the record of voting on anything that's going to say, yes, this is a good plan, because I don't think that's where the constituents I've talked to are, or do I think, at the end of the day, that's... You know, I don't want one of my last acts, at least on this council, to be this, because I think this is not a legacy that I want to live with and be on the record of supporting this. I'd actually want to go to the office and say, I think this is not a good plan overall, for the reasons why I've stated. I think it boils down to a luxury tax. I don't think it's going to do anything for the region, and the money that we're talking about isn't really going to be helpful at the end of the day to mass transit, which I support. And I think there's a whole litany of things that are going to happen. It's going to put more pressure potentially on Womata and others that haven't even been thought about. So I think it's going to be a very problematic plan down the road. But if it's going to happen, which it sounds like it's going to happen, I want to make sure that we allow Vice Mayor Snyder into doing what he needs to do to make sure that at least the agreement is the best that it can be for the city of Falls Church and our residents. So that's where I'd want to be at the end of the day.
Okay, did you have more you wanted to say, Mr. Shields?
Could I?
If, if there's any other preliminaries that we need to discuss, we could discuss this. But what we wanted to do is just go through what the resolution says and what it doesn't say. And so if we're ready for that, we could do that.
All right, let's do it.
I think one of the key things in it, you know, when you, you go through the whereas's and it provides background, one of the whereas's does indicate that there is an expression of support for the goals that were stated, those goals being to move more people through the I-66 corridor, enhance transportation connectivity, improve transit service, reduce roadway congestion, and five, increase travel options. And those are the stated goals for the program, and so this would say as a whereas, not in the resolves, but those are worthy goals. But the resolution itself starts at line 79.
Before you do that, Mr. Shields, could, I just wanted to highlight line 56, one of the additional whereas's, just to acknowledge some of Mr. Bruce's concerns. It does raise that there is still concern about some of the other components of the design that then get further in the now-there-fours, which I think was where you were heading.
Okay. And actually, you know, Cindy, if you'd like to just go through the now-there-fours, since you are the...
Certainly.
If you're just going to read them, I think we can all read them ourselves. I don't think that's much needed.
Just highlight a few concepts as to why we undertook it. I do want to note on, they start on line 79 for the public, and in the initial introductory paragraph, one of the edits we did late this afternoon with Vice Mayor Snyder's input was to note that the conditions below need to be resolved in an acceptable manner to the city of Falls Church and that this resolution is only approving, as you were, or favoring the continued dialogue and development of the project, because we acknowledge that it's still in flux. So this isn't an endorsement of the project or the final agreement, but that there's some conditions the council is concerned about and is willing to proceed and afford motion.
I'm sorry, Assistant City Manager, but in line 80, it says clearly that the city favors continuing the development of the final project implementation process.
What line is that, Mr. Z?
Eighty.
Eighty and eighty-one.
So it's intended to say we're favoring the development process and continuing the dialogue, but not that there's an endorsement of this?
Clearly says favors continuing the development of the final project implementation process.
So this is why it's before council tonight to determine if the language reflects your intent.
Yeah, I mean, I'm with, I think with, Dan, thanks for your careful read of that. I mean, it's sort of cute by half, you know, it's sort of like trying to dance some kind of dance. And it's either we're standing up for the project or we're not, or we have concerns about. I mean, there's three options. One, we sort of don't get into it at all, we endorse it or don't endorse it. But what I'm advocating for is that we don't endorse it, or at worst, don't take a position on it, but simply say, if the thing is going to go forward, these are the conditions that the agreement needs to at least meet to make sure that, you know, we're at the table at the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission, which is where the money is going to get pulled out. And we've talked about ways of ensuring that, given our limited number of votes on that body, that we get our, that we are, have the ability to take our fair share. But I cannot be clearer that I will not support something that says that this is a good plan. And I'm not saying this does or doesn't, but it's just not clear at best.
All right, how about some language, just something along the lines of instead of favors, something like the city desires improvement of the something or other, something along those lines, which is, you know, it's more neutral.
Well, let me just ask, before we start checking the language here, and there's, I can tell there's been a lot of work involved, put into this, and you're trying to thread the needle here. What happens if we don't approve the resolution?
Well, let me, let me try to respond the way I look at this right now. I've raised, as you all know, tonight and other times, questions about the project. I think there's a lot of pressure coming from the western part of the region to just widen 66. And unless we find a reasonable middle way that prevents that from happening, I think there's a lot of pressure to do that. So we're kind of in the middle, and it's, you know, maybe, maybe if this project falls away, nothing happens, or maybe the pressure just builds for widening, in which case I think we really lose big time. And so that's kind of the way I'm looking at it. I think, if I were to say tonight, I would say we ought to keep the dialogue going, state that we've got issues, and then focus on the, the framework agreement. And I think that's what this tries to do.
All right, so if there's a desire to work with this, why don't we work with this and try to bang it out? If there's not a desire to do that, then we don't need to.
So if we're going to go sort of the agnostic route, which I think is what I hear Vice Mayor Snyder saying, rather than just having favors, why not just strike that language and just say, say what we mean, that the condition, the following conditions need to be met, period, and not, and not sort of talk about favoring or not favoring. And again, I would favor saying something maybe a little bit sharper in the, in the whereas's, if it's not going to be in the therefours, but I wouldn't support the therefore as it's drafted now with the favoring language. And again, I do appreciate the fine line that we're walking, but it's just, it's just too cute by half for me.
All right, why don't we try to bang this out? How about the city requires changes to the development implementation process as noted below, or something like, along those lines? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, I like that.
That, or even just kind of just saying that the city notes that the following conditions need to be resolved in a manner acceptable to the city of Falls Church and just enlisting them.
Yeah, right. Remove the objectionable portions of eighty and eighty-one.
So as you all are talking, I'm trying to edit on the screen, and then when you have consensus, I can tweak it. But right now, I deleted desires to favor continuing the development of the final project implementation process, so it would just read that the city requires the following conditions to be resolved in a manner acceptable.
I love your choice of colors.
All right, what do people think about that?
I think this states our views, but it, I think the vote on Wednesday is likely to be opposed, support, or abstain. I think this is a reasonable expression of our concerns. How that's translated into action on Wednesday remains to be seen, but we'll see how it goes.
Well, let me ask you this. So this resolution, is this resolution essentially directing you? Or is this, is this directing you? In other words, who's this resolution going to?
Well, I think it's a general statement of our concerns, but it doesn't direct me at all at this point. It states our concerns.
But I mean, do you need direction? We can give you verbal direction. It doesn't have to be in a resolution.
I mean, I prefer a little bit of flexibility on Wednesday, because I don't know how this is going to go, but I think there is probably going to be an action to remove this project. I suspect that the people that really oppose the tolling are going to move to remove the project from the list, and then they'll want to vote on that. And the question is, we can express our concerns, but at that point, there's going to be a vote, and the people that probably are going to push removing it are people who don't want to address our concerns. They're people who want to do exactly the opposite, which is to widen 66 and the heck with multimodal. So that's kind of the situation.
But that's, that's sort of why I asked the question, and that's sort of what I'm not getting from the process, is what, let's just say the vote by the body is no, the project is still moving forward, as I understand it.
No, I don't think so. Go ahead.
Let me comment a little bit on the higher, the bigger process here. This project is one out of many, many regional projects that are in the CLRP that have been modeled for air quality conformity. So to vote no, you're voting no for all the projects regionally, including Maryland, including DC, and anything here in Virginia. So this is not a, you know, 66 inside the Beltway, there wasn't a 66 inside the Beltway project, and then a no-build version of that, whereas if you didn't like one aspect of a project, you would just vote for the no-build alternative as part of the package, and that would have been modeled in the air quality conformity analysis. This project was modeled in the air quality conformity analysis as this project. So to vote no would be to vote no on the entire... So to vote no would be to vote no on the entire air quality conformity analysis, which would then have to be, if this project was then suggested to be removed, if it got a no vote altogether, the entire package would have to be remodeled, you know, three to four months from now without this project. We would have to determine who pays for that, likely Virginia. That's what's at stake. And then it also, you know, anything else that's in that plan will get delayed regionally.
So would a no, let's, let's say they move, someone moves to take this project out.
Right.
I suspect someone might. So what's the effect of removing this project?
Of remodeling the entire analysis, removing, you cannot just remove this project.
And if this project were to be removed, what would be the assumption on I-66 at that point? It would remain as is? It would be widened? It would be what?
A new, a new project can be proposed, absolutely, based on, you know, the regional feedback. I mean, the CTB is going to hear the whole range of issues. You know, we are already going to HOV three by 2020, that stays in the project with no way to mitigate, you know, that, you know, but so there are some, some regional things that could certainly, I, I can't speak for our administration, but I don't think the idea is to abandon improving something everyone feels so strongly about as a, as a general issue in this region, which is fixing the congestion on 66 and enhancing modes along 66.
Okay, let's get back to how we're going to resolve this then.
So, so I'm just going to go back to what I said earlier. I don't want to kind of overcomplicate this, and I understand that this is part of a larger effort, but those larger efforts haven't been before this council as a whole, so I'm not going to comment or be forced into a position of, you know, you either take this or you don't take the whole package. But I'm looking at the resolution that's before us, and I will not vote in favor of something that says Falls Church supports this project. I can live with it's going to move forward because of a larger packet, therefore you're sort of stuck with it, and say, these are the conditions that have been met, but I will not vote something that says in favor, understanding that Vice Mayor Snyder is going to have to vote that way in a larger packet. That's fine.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm, I'm in, I am in agreement with, with that sentiment, and I support, I, however, I think that, that this change in the language, though, that's being discussed here, all that does is put our concerns memorialized and puts it in, in Vice Mayor Snyder's hands, and how he chooses to vote or act on is up to him. I don't think this gives him specific guidance either way.
So let me ask you this. Outside of directing or giving you guidance, what's the purpose of this resolution?
I think...
Outside of that now, it lays out the concerns that I think could then carry forward not just to the TPP, but into the...
Into the discussions with the NVTC members on, on the framework.
And what does TPP stand for again?
Transportation Planning Board.
That's...
That's that COG.
That's a COG.
And it's established under federal law that any federally aided transportation project has to be approved by TPP.
But it's a regional entity.
Yeah.
So this document that we're doing here is not just to inform you, because we can inform you without this document as to what our thoughts are.
You're, you're putting us on the record publicly as to the issues that are important to us, and then there'll be a lot of different procedural things that'll occur, but this is certainly, and I would plan whatever I do on Wednesday, I would plan to basically read through this, or at the very least summarize it during the discussion.
I think this is important to put the issues on the table, certainly as we prepare for the TPP, but it is also for a lot of discussions that we're going to have with NVTC and VDOT as we finish the framework agreement and the final implementation. And so this gets, as you noted, those issues on the table officially. There will be a formal NVTC vote that Mr. Snyder will be representing the city on or our alternative, and then there will be a formal CTP vote, which is the Commonwealth Transportation Board, which is an entity of Virginia.
Okay, so why don't we try to bang this out, then? Because it sounds like there is a purpose to this, which is not just to tell you what you might do on Wednesday, but to tell the world what we think of this thing, and it sounds like we have an opinion that we'd like to share with the world, or at least this part of the world. So why don't we try to bang this thing out, get some language that's agreeable to most, if not all, of the folks on council?
And now that I'm sort of, you know, this has been a helpful discussion, I mean, if this is a part of a larger whole, and it can't be broken out, is what I'm hearing again tonight, which is unfortunate, but I guess it's complicated, is the answer to that. If Mr. Snyder wants to say that he has to vote in favor of the whole concept rather than a particular plan, because he's looking at a whole, and raise the concerns about the, this particular plan, that's one thing. But I, on the I-66 issue, I, I as one council member do not want to have a document out there that says we support this particular item.
That's why we're going to change it right now. So let's go ahead and do that, and hopefully bang this out so we can get on the other three items on the agenda tonight. What else?
Now about that intermodal.
Multimodal. I think that was the only offending language, actually.
So the language, is the language in the, I guess it's not a preamble, but the where, or I guess it's the now therefore clause, is that agreeable to folks here?
Yeah. It is, it is to me. I think set forth the issues.
All right, so let's go to the bullets below there. Do those address people's concerns? Do you feel like we need to do any more work on those?
I just have one, one point of clarification. Isn't understood that the tolling concept, that's, I'm looking at line 57, components of tolling, that that includes sort of the number of HOV free that would be required in hybrids and all of that, that's mixed up in that bag of tolling? Because I know that there's some environmental issues, Dan, that you probably care passionately about, like electric basically not getting a, a free ride? Or does that need to be called out separately?
Well, if we're going to, that would need to be put in the therefor's, all the whereas's.
No, I'm just saying, is that captured already in the, you know, remains concerned about project components of tolling? I view that as a component of tolling. Or do we, or Dan, do you think it needs to be called out separately? Because you're our environmental guy.
No, I'm okay with leaving it in the tolling portion.
All right, so what, is there anything that's omitted that people feel needs to be put in here? Mary Beth, Connolly?
Just one question, and it may already be in there or already taken care of. I'd just like to ensure that the tolling inside the Beltway is done, is a governmental tolling and not a public-private partnership tolling. That's the outside the Beltway is the...
That is 100% accurate. I also want to go back and add, for the clean fuel being the tolling component, it's actually the regional plan component based on our valuation of the system. So it's not, that's the changes with or without the project part of the presentation. It's the removal of the clean fuel and HOV increased to three, so it's not a component of this project, it's with or without this project.
All right, thank you. Are there other?
So we don't need to say that we support, if, if there is tolling, we'd like it by governmental agency. You, you can add that, but it's absolutely, that's this project.
Okay, that's already, apparently presumed, it's not an issue or not a controversy.
Okay.
Okay. What other comments do folks have to the document? I have one. It doesn't seem to me like, one of the things I think was important to many of us is to ensure that Falls Church got its, quote, fair share of money to mitigate traffic impacts. It seems like we kind of danced around it in a very polite way, but I wonder if we should articulate it a little more strongly.
So starting at 124 through 126?
Starting at 119.
Distribution of a fair share.
Fair share, right.
It's, it might be a different line item now that I've added it.
But it just says among jurisdictions. I mean, I should just say, City Falls Church gets its fair share of projects.
119.
Well, but it just says the distribution of a fair share among jurisdictions inside the Beltway. I, I guess, I don't know, I'm just wondering, do we want to be more blunt about it and just say, not just jurisdiction?
We get the fair share?
Well, no, just, I, my concern is that we get lost in the shuffle, that we get one vote out of many votes, and that doesn't ensure us anything in the long run.
Except among jurisdictions, because we're not really concerned with that, two Falls, four Falls Church.
I mean, I, I don't know the exact wording I would do off the top of my head, but it would be something along the lines that Falls Church receives its fair share of projects, you know, inside the Beltway or, or whatever, due to the fact that it's going to be adversely impacted. Something like that, that's a little stronger, would probably be preferable to me, but I don't know if other people feel the same way.
That's a point that I raised earlier. Why don't we just say the City of Falls Church, which is likely to be adversely affected, receive its fair share? Can you repeat that?
Yes, please.
The City of Falls Church, which is likely to be adversely affected, and then carry that forward, impacted by the Transform 66 Inside the Beltway project, receive its fair share. Can you turn on the microphone, please?
Sorry.
Sorry, Alex, I was typing in that.
City of Falls Church, which is likely to be adversely affected by the project, receive its fair share.
Among jurisdictions?
I, I think we best strike that, because jurisdictions outside the Beltway can also receive funding, is my understanding. So it's probably, we have to get rid of that language.
Well, we wouldn't want that to happen.
Why don't we just say that? So now we're saying that the City of Falls Church should get its fair share. So the concept of the paragraph has changed.
Changed.
So we're saying we should get our fair share, and localities should be prioritized.
Well, we could say both. They could say, we think the project's funding should be prioritized inside the Beltway and Falls Church should get its fair share of the project.
I like that.
Right, right. We've got that covered in the, in the line 44 and 45 with the first set of whereas, only locality fully located within, so, you know, as, can refer back to that and say you should...
Yeah, but if you want it in, in the, in the now therefor, because that's more binding than the whereas, so.
So what do you got now?
We lift, we lifted from the whereas and stick it, stick it in the therefor's.
Distribution of fair share of projects among jurisdictions. And specifically to Falls Church, which is likely to be adversely affected. Are you, you're trying to preserve the meaning of the original language, right?
I know, it's a problem, especially at 10:30. But how about the distribution of a fair share of projects for Falls Church and other jurisdictions located inside the Beltway, which are likely to be adversely affected? Does that do it?
That seems more eloquently said.
Can you say that again, Mr. Snyder?
Distribution of a fair share of projects for Falls Church and other jurisdictions located inside the Beltway, which are likely to be adversely impacted by the Transform 66. Can you turn on the microphone, please? Thank you.
Say it again.
The distribution of a fair share of projects for Falls Church and other jurisdictions located in the, inside the Beltway, which are likely to be adversely impacted by the Transform 66 Inside the Beltway project, and, and then B. Does that do it?
Other than that change, any other changes requested by anyone? Is this something we're comfortable with, with the changes we've just made? Mr. Shields, do you want any action on this? Do you recommend any action, quote, to approve this resolution, or can we just do it by...
Can I see your notes? We would request it because of the vote on the 21st if council's feasible tonight, which is why I was trying to edit as you spoke.
Okay, I move approval of TR 15-29 as amended.
And I can do a roll call vote if you wish.
All right, do we have a second before we do that?
Sure, if you can get the motion in a second.
I'll second.
Okay.
And again, my understanding, just so I'm clear before I, I vote on it, this is only going to the COG board, not to a federal agency or the federal government at this point.
Well, it's just that it's a resolution by the city council. It uses various different fora to communicate.
And as I just, I just remind staff and Mr. Snyder as well, that if anything related to this or other matters, go to the, a federal body, that I, my name should not be included in that.
Okay.
All right, so with that, why don't we call the roll call vote, or you call the roll call?
Mr. Brute.
Yes.
Ms. Connolly.
Yes.
Mr. Duncan.
Yes.
Ms. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Snyder.
Yes.
Mr. Z.
Yes.
Mayor Tarter.
Yes.
Motion's agreed to.
Okay, great. Are we done then with this item? Thank you for sticking around, we appreciate your patience and all your good work.
Okay, thank you.
Why don't we go on to the next item and keep on trucking? What do we have?
So we, what we have, I think in the council's packet is the, the list of items that were in the budget document for unmet needs, and so we just wanted to make sure the council got that, that was in your packet and was available for discussion.
What does it look like, Mr.?
It is an excerpt from the budget, and it looks...
It's not in my attachment.
All right, so it was in the packet, it was posted on Granicus, but apparently our copy making, it did not get in the packet.
Thank you. I'll send you the certified copy.
It seems like a conspiracy.
Is this not in the packet? Is that what just happened? She's mad, I can tell.
Go for it, Karen.
It was posted on Granicus, but unfortunately didn't get copied. I have just brought it up on the screen. Our apologies.
The screen is probably easier.
Did everyone get a copy but Karen? Is that what you guys did?
No.
Apparently, our, our copy team on, on, you know, when the packet was copied out, did not copy this item, which was... It is, you know, it's, it's a lot to digest because it's, you know, $4.3 million worth of unfunded items, and so I don't know whether there's an appetite at this time of the meeting to go through all of those and have that discussion.
I mean, you know, I think your question is how do you prioritize it to get to that number? And these, you know, the first question is, were they in the list? And I just have, everyone I look at is on the list, so I assume 75% would be as well. The real question is, how did you prioritize?
And, you know, of the, of the items that are, we're using fund balance for, the transportation planner position is already hired, and so that was not a hard decision. But the, so there, really, there are only two things that, that are new, and one is the, is the environmental coordinator position and the $25,000 for, for bicycle facility improvements.
So are you saying that it's...
Are you saying that it's new to the prioritization list, or are you saying that it's new in that we haven't already spent money on it?
That it's new in that it's sort of the, in terms of new discretionary things to put for the council to work on, those are the only two things that are new in this budget amendment. The environmental coordinator position has been discussed, and I think in multiple communications from the ESC, and in discussions with the council, so we did bring that forward amongst the $4.3 million of unmet needs. And so I think your question is, does it rank? I mean, if you look at the whole list, is that the top priority? And, and, you know, I think all of those unmet needs are significant and serious, but in terms of the opportunity presented at the current time with... in terms of the opportunity presented at the current time with, for the environmental program coordinator, that's what we brought forward as a recommendation. But, you know, in terms of a rigorous analysis, did we, you know, mostly what we've, everything else is taking grants that are designated for certain purposes and there's, you know, there's not really a similar discretionary type of discussion. It, it really is that $105,000, $25,000 for bicycle improvements and $80,000 for the environmental coordinator. That's really all that's open for discussion.
And which of the items on this list would have been your next highest priority item?
Well, you know, I would probably be using it to buy IT equipment and things like that, or put it towards paving, those types of things. It's, it's not enough money to make a big difference in terms of the overall big picture. And so, I think it's, it's an opportunity to decide where the council wants to make an impact.
And if I can call council's, council's attention to, these are all the unmet needs, but the one that I have on the screen were the ones that the city manager prioritized at the time of the budget process.
And that is true. And the council actually made adjustments through the budget process, you know, to do the radios and to do a whole, you know, host of things that came up and became prioritized through the council's own budget deliberations.
But you did not go back to this list when the money was available to sort of work from that to your top priority. You just had a squeaky wheel that said, I want to do these two things, and that's what you said, okay, yeah, that makes sense, or that seems to meet, you know, council's vision.
Alignment with council's vision, I think, would be the way I would prefer to describe it.
I, I think that, I, I don't particularly, in spite of what the news press chose to report, I don't particularly oppose any of these items. But I think that the process that we went through, and the reason that we asked that these items be gathered in the budget book, was so that there would be a more systematic decision-making process. And I, you know, I'm concerned that even now you can't say, well, my next two items are. You need to kind of rattle off a couple of things, but you haven't even gone back to this list to say, no, the next highest priority item is this, but the reason I chose these two was this. And I, I just think that we need a more systematic process to, to go forward on this.
I think that's the takeaway from this process, is that when we, starting with the Budget and Finance Committee, I think that's, that's really where we should have started. When we talked about the year-end financial report and what we could have done forward, I think this list should have been right up front and center, and that would have helped guide the discussion right from the outset. And so, I think that point is, is the, is the main takeaway from this fall process.
And I think that going forward in any other budget amendment processes that we have, this list should come forward. And I accept that your priorities may have changed, that the direction from council may have suggested that, sorry, that something was more important, but we need to be starting with this list. And, and if it needs to be revised, it can be revised, but we, we do need to start the process with that. I, I will note that there are items on this list that are not recurring expenditures.
That is true.
And from a fiscal standpoint, that might have bumped some of those items up the list, because they're not recurring expenditures. And I understand that we have a term contract with employees, but that's still an uncomfortable situation. It's easier to say, oh, well, you know, we're not gonna, not gonna do as much sidewalk repair next year, because that doesn't impact individuals as directly and... That's all I have to say.
All right, does anyone else have anything to say? If not, why don't we keep on moving? Okay.
Okay, we, we, the next item is interjurisdictional contracts, and we were bringing these to the council, not because there's substantive amendments to them, but because their term is expiring and we were, are seeking an extension of the terms. And so, these are the agreement on the jailing of offenders and the...
Safety and judicial.
And public safety and judicial services.
Okay, so is there nothing substantive? It's just extending them for another year or two years or whatever the term is?
That is correct.
All right, does anyone have any questions on?
Have we, we tried negotiating these at all further, or is this probably the best place we're going to land?
Well, we spent hundreds of hours negotiating them about a year ago, and these agreements had a very short term, and so this will, will now just allow them to go forward. So, we did not crack them open to renegotiate them.
Was staff sufficiently satisfied with where we're at with these?
Yes.
How long are the terms right now?
They're automatically renewable unless one or the other jurisdiction gives 60 days notice to bail out.
And so, what's the...
Do we have some kind of schedule to talk about these agreements and look at them every so often? I mean, because there was a little hiccup, if I recall, that's why we cracked it open.
They had gone 20 years, I think, without a, a lot of really close look, and so practices started to drift from what the agreements were. So, there does need to be a check-in. These two contracts, I would say, are very actively managed, and our fire services is the one that probably drifted the most because we, for whatever reason, but...
Just, just so we don't have a replay of the, let's not look at these for 20 years until something goes wrong.
That's right.
Can we maybe, and again, won't, I won't be here for all the fun, at least next year, but maybe at some point in the future, perhaps, just, I know that we have a policy where we look at our fiscal policies every year. Can we put this into the mix of looking at them every, you know, two years or alternating, you know, even odd years, just to take a...
I think a biennial would be a, a good approach.
So, and just kind of put that into the document that the council adopts, that they'll look at the interjurisdictional agreements biannually?
Okay.
They'll be part of your legacy.
You know, I'll come back at some point. It won't be my entire legacy.
We could put that in the motion, authorizing the city manager to execute these, but in that motion, we can embed the idea in that these shall be looked at and with the city council, at least on a biennial basis.
All right, sounds good. Any comments on that? Any other comments on this?
Just the quick, obvious questions, are there any reason why we shouldn't extend these?
No.
Okay. Mr. Z, what do you got?
I was trying to think of a clever way of getting Nader's name on the, on the review cycle, the Nader rule or something like that.
All right. Let's, let's keep on trucking. Anything else? How about council comments, schedule requests, anything like that? Do we need any of that right now?
Can we, can we just, I would just ask that we figure out the way ahead on the Plaza.
Okay, so the Plaza would need to go through the CIP process, and so that would be the next step. And so, unless directed otherwise, when we're bringing the CIP through the Planning Commission and through the city council, that would be the time to, to have that discussion. And the reason I would say do it that way rather than try to front-load it is, we currently have too many CI capital projects. We are, we have 23 transportation projects with grants with deadlines on that we're managing with Mike Collins' staff, it's a handful of people. And so, this five-year planning process is really important for us to be able to really focus on getting these projects done. And so, I would ask for the council's patience to allow us to go, to build this into the CIP process and then do it the right way. We are trying to work, what is the best way we could execute this project to get from point A to point B in a way that is efficient? And I think we can get there, but I think, I think if we try to front-load it and get it in front of everything else, then a lot of other projects, there's going to be a cascading effect that we just, I'd, I'd rather do in a planful way.
So, that, so that makes sense, but I think there's a couple data points that are important in part of that effort, or it's going to keep spinning. One is what happens with that alleyway?
Yeah.
And then two is, are businesses going to want to buy in if they have reserved tables? Like, I'm a staunch believer, we cannot be using public space for, here you go at no cost.
No, we would, if we did it, I think we would rent it. It would be a rent agreement.
Or however it works.
Yeah.
To, to cover the cost. So, I, I think that some preliminary work should be had on, on those two, two major issues.
Okay.
Okay. Sure.
Along the same lines of what Ms. Oliver was talking about with the priorities in the operating budget, I think the same thing needs to be done with the CIP, is where does this fall in the priorities of all the things we have got to get done? Because it's, it's a fun idea, but is it really a top priority? And what do the businesses around it think about it beyond just tables? What do they think about their drive aisle? Would that really ruin some businesses to lose that drive aisle? So, I think we need to look at the, the whole thing.
And I think we can answer those, I think we can get to the bottom of those questions, but, yeah.
And I don't think that's front-loading it. I mean, I think if, if those are sort of no-gos, like we cannot negotiate something about the drive aisles, or it's disastrous, that may counsel for, do we really want to do this at all and not waste a heck of a lot of time on it? And if the businesses aren't willing to pony up, then what does that tell us?
Okay. All right, do we have any council comments or schedule issues? Okay.
Is there an EDC?
EDC is scheduled for this Thursday, and I need to grab Nader after this meeting and discuss that.
This Thursday?
Yeah, this, this is, this is the fourth Thursday.
Whatever it is.
Or whatever, it's the, it's the Thursday that it's supposed to be.
All right, Ms. Conley?
My question is just about the September 30th budget numbers. I had been under the impression that we were going to have a gang of eight meeting where Richard was going to present the September 30th numbers, and we were going to ask the schools to present their September 30th numbers, but that is not going to happen in October, and I'm just wondering if that can happen in November before we have our next budget meeting, or before there's the next on here where we have a budget meeting set? Do you know what I'm asking? That wasn't very articulate, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
We know what you're asking.
Okay.
So, so I'll work with the mayor, just in terms of when, when that next meeting will occur. But in the meantime, we can do a budget and finance session on the first quarter financial report.
That would be good. Can we ask the schools to come and do their first quarter enrollment numbers at the budget and finance committee?
They're crunching their enrollment numbers right now. That's going to be coming out soon with the chart that has where all the kids are coming from. That's a really important document. Yeah, I mean, they, they don't really start working until after October 1, so I think it's going to be soon.
Okay. Is there anything else we should be talking about tonight? If not, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move away, John.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. Good evening.